Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kaski.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
And Mrs. Yarko.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kaski.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
They've been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is our first of two special city council meetings for the budget. We are going to be going over a number of items today, and then we'll have another one two weeks from today. So I will turn it over at this point to our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I am very pleased to present the fiscal year 2022 budget for city council's consideration, as you noted, beginning this evening and continuing on with the second hearing on the 27th, and then formal and final budget adoption on May 4th. And so we're beginning tonight, as we normally do, with a number of presentations. But let me first begin with some opening comments. The budget before you this evening includes the addition of seven police officers, enabling the police department to have a larger presence in neighborhoods and commercial areas, as well as the ability to focus more attention on speeding complaints. The additional manpower also bolstered community policing efforts. While the city is among the safest in the country, this will help us raise the bar. The city still has 128 fewer full-time positions than we had in 2008, which really is still a surprising number to me, which saves an estimated $12 million annually. The proposed budget before you also includes funding for the city's first-ever full-time social worker. The position will work with city departments to address growing societal needs related to mental wellness, drug addiction, PTSD, and other needs. Our police, fire, code enforcement, and other departments need to be well-equipped to deal with these challenging situations, and having input from a certified social worker who collaborates regularly with agencies at the county, state, and federal level will be invaluable and further enhance the quality of life for residents that may be struggling for one reason or another. The annual budget continues to fund major infrastructure improvements, including $105 million in major road reconstruction during the upcoming season. In addition, the proposed budget includes over $5 million to fund sectional repairs and full reconstruction of over 21 neighborhood streets across the city. Nowwithstanding a very tough year due to the pandemic crisis, Sterling Heights' financial position is healthy and includes a sufficient fund balance to weather any unforeseen expenditures over the next few years. Most importantly, a home is often a family or an individual's largest asset, and property values across the city are robust. The proposed budget helps to maintain and grow the value of these assets by reinvesting in neighborhoods with improved sidewalks, enhanced water and sewer infrastructure, more trees, improved local park amenities, increased community-oriented policing, and strong code enforcement. Study after study demonstrates property values are strong in communities with low crime, ample park amenities, along with green trailways, infrastructure, and good roads. The city is hitting all these marks, and it all adds up to a great quality of life. Like past years, as I mentioned, we have a number of presentations planned beginning this evening for the budget. If city council desires any budget amendments regarding tonight's topics, please be sure to indicate such after the presentations and after the ordinance introduction. We will then formalize any suggested amendments with motions to consider at the second budget hearing on the 27th. All motions for any amendments will need to be voted on at the April 27th meeting, and that includes potential amendments from that budget hearing, so that they can be incorporated into the final budget adoption on May 4th. There'll be plenty of time for questions from the audience and a chorus city council after the presentations. And so now, I'm pleased to introduce Budget and Finance Director Jennifer Varney, who will elaborate further on the proposed budgets, and then we'll continue on with our presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kaski, and members of council. I'm happy to be here tonight to share an overview of the proposed 2122 fiscal year budget. Before I get started, however, I would like to share an update of how the city will be impacted by the American Rescue Plan. The American Rescue Plan of 2021 was signed by the President on March 11th. As part of the Act, approximately $130 billion was allocated to local fiscal recovery. Approximately $45 billion of that will be allocated to metropolitan cities under a modified CDBG formula. Sterling Heights is currently estimated to receive approximately $20 million in funding through the American Rescue Plan. The funding will be distributed in two payments. We should receive about $10 million within 60 days of enactment, and the second half one year later. The funding is meant to assist cities with the ongoing financial impacts related to the COVID-19 crisis, and as such, does not have to be spent until the end of calendar year 2024. As of today, there are still a lot of unknowns on the allowable uses for this funding, and we are awaiting guidance from the U.S. Department of Treasury. However, here are the allowable uses as detailed in the Act itself. First, to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. To provide premium pay for essential workers. To provide government services to the extent of revenue lost. And investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. And the Act specifically prohibits using funds for pension contributions. However, there are still a lot of unknowns at this point. The published allocations are just estimates. We don't, won't know the final amounts till they are published by the U.S. Department of Treasury. We don't know how a revenue loss will be defined. Will it be total fund revenue, revenue by line items, and what time periods will be compared to calculate the loss? And finally, what will be the specific rules for spending the funds? The Act only provides an overview, and specific guidelines are yet to be provided. And this is very similar to what happened with the CARES Act. The Act was passed, but then pages and pages of rules came out on how you could spend the money. So what are some recommended best practices for allocating these funds? First, take our time. We have nearly three and a half years to spend this money. We need to wait for the rules, and then develop a strategic plan for the best use of the funds. This is an opportunity to invest in our community, and we want to do it right. We also need to be transparent with the residents as to how we are using these funds, and think long-term, focusing on the financial stability of the city. The truth is, we still don't know the full extent of the economic impact of the pandemic. Taxable values have not been affected yet, but what kind of cases might be brought to the tax tribunal over the next few years? Will more businesses go out of business? Will office buildings remain vacant? We need to reserve some of these funds to be prepared for these possibilities. And lastly, although it is a lot of money, it is one-time money. One-time money should be used to, not used to supplement ongoing operational expenditures. One-time money should be used for one-time expenses, which is one reason why this revenue is not reflected in the proposed 2122 operational budget. And with that, now I would like to provide an overview of the proposed budget. The total city budget is $230 million, which can be broken down into five major fund types as depicted here. The largest city fund, the general fund, totals $115.5 million, or 50% of the total fund budget, followed by the Water and Sewer Fund at $56.9 million, which is 25% of the total budget. Special revenues, capital projects, and debt service funds make up the remainder. In total, the budget decreased by 7.8%, or $19.5 million over last year. The major changes are broken down on this slide. A decrease of $15.2 million in the Facilities Improvements Fund. All renovations are expected to be completed in the current fiscal year, so there are no expenditures included in the proposed budget. A decrease in the Capital Projects Fund of $14.9 million. $11.6 million was carried forward in the current budget for the construction of the new Public Works Building, also expected to be completed this year. In addition, the current year budget included the replacement of the exterior finishing of the library, the police department, and the court for $1.4 million, and the CARES Act-funded installation of automated doors for $700,000. The proposed capital funds budget includes only the most critical requests. Of the $9.6 million of departmental capital requests, only $5.6 million are included, and 1.4 of that is related to the sidewalk gap and repair programs. A decrease in major road construction of 6.2 is due to the completion of several large projects in the prior year. $3.3 million of new projects are included in the proposed budget. And a decrease of $1.4 million in the Parks and Recreation Fund is due to the completion of the construction funded through the Recreating Recreation Village. The only project remaining and included in the proposed budget is the Bocce Ball Court. These decreases are offset by an increase in the Road Bond Construction Fund of $11.4 million to fund the first phase of the Mound Road total reconstruction, which is slated to begin this summer. As you may remember, an $18 million bond was sold this March to finance this portion, and I'm happy to report we received a very low interest rate of 1.54%. An increase of $4.2 million in the general fund and $2.9 million in the Water and Sewer Fund also offset the overall decrease. The Water and Sewer Fund will be discussed in detail at the next budget workshop in two weeks, and the general fund will be discussed next. The general fund budget totals $115.5 million and makes up over 50% of the total fund budget. The general fund can be divided into the city's eight departmental budgets as depicted here, and you can see that the police, fire, and public works departments make up nearly 65% of the general fund budget. The total general fund budget increased 3.6%, or $4 million over last year, and the main variances are listed here. $2.1 million is increased wages due to contractual wage increases and the addition of 20 full-time employees resulting from the citywide manpower study that was presented at strategic planning. $1.8 million is due to an increase in the required contribution to the police and fire pension fund, and $950,000 is due to an increase of 9.3% in health insurance rates. These rates were based on 2019 data, which saw a large spike in claims. It is expected that rates may come down next year. The rate increase is slightly offset by the continued implementation of employee premium sharing. Most employee groups are now contributing 5% to 10% of premiums. Other increases include a larger general fund transfer to the Capital Projects Fund. Although capital project spending is not increasing over last year, the transfer is greater due to the use of fund balance in the capital fund last year. The proposed budget also includes an investment to convert all streetlights to LED at a cost of just over $700,000, an increase in the required contribution to the general employees retirement fund of $500,000, and an increase in liability insurance of $250,000. Reductions include a lower general fund transfer to major roads and a decrease in overtime due to the addition of full-time personnel. I'd like to highlight a few items in the proposed budget before we move on. First, as discussed at the strategic planning session in January, the city has dramatically reduced full-time personnel over the past 20 years without a corresponding reduction in the level of public services being delivered. In fact, the city has recently undertaken many significant initiatives that have greatly benefited the community, and there is a strong desire to undertake more. The additional manpower recommended in this budget is absolutely critical to sustaining the success that has made Sterling Heights a leader amongst Michigan municipalities. Thirteen new general fund positions are included in the proposed budget, funded through a small property tax increase that will cost the average homeowner about $20 annually. Four Water and Sewer Fund positions are also included that will be critical in managing the proposed meter replacement project and the transition to monthly billing. These positions will increase the average water and sewer bill about $6 annually. And finally, the proposed budget includes an additional seven police officers funded through a proposal to transition jail services to Macomb County. Even with the critical increase to full-time staffing, the city still has 128 less full-time positions than in 2008, which saves an estimated $12 million annually. Including these new positions, the city's employee-per-resident ratio is four employees for every thousand residents, still the lowest among our comparable communities. Next, I would like to highlight an exciting project in the proposed budget to convert the city's 1,800 streetlights to LED. LED lights have a 10-year warranty and typically last 15 to 20 years. That's approximately three times longer than the lights that we are replacing, a definite step toward a more sustainable community. This project has an initial investment of $716,000. However, it is estimated to save $175,000 annually in electricity costs, and when combined with the rebates we will receive, will pay for itself in less than four years. Now, let's look at general fund revenues. Budgeted general fund revenues total $113.4 million, broken down into major categories as depicted here. Property taxes still make up most of the general fund revenue at 63% of the total. Total general fund revenues increased by 2.6 million, or 2.3%. Property tax revenue increased 3.6 million due to an overall rise in taxable value of 3.5%. However, the inflationary increase that most residents will see is only 1.4%, with the remainder of the increase coming from growth and home sales resulting in the uncapping of values. The proposed property tax rate is increasing to fund the additional positions discussed earlier, as well as for a return to the pre-COVID operating millage rate. And the police and fire pension millage is also increasing to cover the required contribution to the plan. Although state revenue sharing is projected to increase by $580,000 from the current year, it is actually $100,000 less than the amount received two years ago, still seeing the effects of the coronavirus pandemic. And a similar story for court fines. Although projected to be up from the current year, we will still be down over $1.3 million from the levels seen in 2019. Revenue decreases include $4.1 million less in expected grant revenue due to the CARES Act money that was received in the current year, and a continued reduction in investment interest at an additional $300,000. The proposed city millage rate for the 2021 tax year is 16.93 mils. The average taxable value for a home in Sterling Heights is just under $81,000, and that's as of the current assessment rule. This equates to a home with a market value of just over $218,000. The annual city taxes on the average home would be $1,371, which is an increase of just $58 annually, or less than $5 per month. And as you can see from this chart, the city's tax rate continues to be one of the lowest in Macomb County, nearly four mils less than Utica, and over 10 mils less than Warren. The proposed general fund expenditures exceed expected general fund revenues by $2.1 million. The COVID-19 pandemic continues to impact expected revenues. Property taxes are held to a 1.4% inflationary increase for this year, and court fines, state revenue sharing, and interest income are also trending below the levels that were expected prior to the pandemic. Thankfully, the city has worked diligently in the years since the Great Recession to build up general fund balance, and as of the June 30th, 2020 audited financial statements, general fund balance totaled nearly $30 million, or 28% of expenditures. Due in large part to COVID-19 relief provided to the city through the CARES Act this year, about $250,000 is expected to be added to fund balance in the current fiscal year and during June 30th, 2021. The proposed use of fund balance will reduce total fund balance to just over $28 million, or 24.3% of expenditures. Strategic use of fund balance over the next few years while continuing to budget for critical needs will ensure the city's continued strong financial position during this ongoing crisis. Now, let's look at special revenue funds. Nine funds totaling $31 million. The largest special revenue fund is Parks and Recreation, which is funded through proceeds of the Recreating Recreation Village and contributions from the general fund. The fund totals $8.9 million this year, a $1 million decrease over last year. The Parks and Recreation Fund will be discussed in detail at the next budget hearing. 57% or $17.8 million of special revenue funds are for the maintenance and repairs to the city's major roads and local neighborhood streets. The major and local road funds both receive funding from the gas and weight tax revenue, often called Act 51 revenue, from the state of Michigan. As you can see from this slide, although Act 51 revenue did not drop to the levels feared at the beginning of the pandemic, it has not increased at the rate that was expected prior to the crisis. Road funding is expected to be up $600,000 from the current fiscal year. However, that is still $400,000 less than what we expected to receive based on projections made in February 2020. The proposed budget continues to prioritize investment in major road repair and reconstruction, and includes nearly $17 million of expenditures, including the resurfacing of 14 Mile and Hayes Road and the rehabilitation of Metro Parkway, not to mention the first phase of the total reconstruction of Mound Road. Safe Streets revenue continues to fund the repair and reconstruction of neighborhood streets, although revenue growth is limited to inflation due to annual rollbacks in the millage rate. When combined with Act 51 funding received from the state, nearly $7.9 million will be invested in neighborhood streets this year, including the repair and reconstruction of over 20 streets. Across all fund, there is a combined city investment in major and local roads of $27 million. The remaining special revenue funds include the Community Development Block grant, which is funded with federal dollars. This year, the CDBG is able to fund the third phase of the replacement of the senior center roofing system and concrete replacement on Urban Drive. $590,000 is also included in additional grant funding through the CARES Act, which is funding the Small Business Relief Grant Program. Public Safety forfeitures funds equipment and supplies for the police department through the use of proceeds from seized property. The Local Development Finance Authority uses tax capture revenue to fund the Velocity Business Incubator and other Smart Zone activities. The Indigent Defense Fund tracks revenue expenses related to rules implemented by the state regarding legal counsel for indigent defendants. It is funded through grant proceeds from the state of Michigan. And finally, the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund uses tax capture to reimburse eligible Brownfield project costs to encourage redevelopment of contaminated and obsolete properties. The current Brownfield is related to the redevelopment of the old Liberty Park site. The Capital Projects Fund totaled $19.1 million and include the use of proceeds from road bonds, as well as $5.5 million of investment in capital projects, equipment, and vehicles. Some highlights in the proposed budget include the replacement of the elevator pumps at the police department, upgrades to the city hall elevators, asphalt resurfacing at fire station number four, the replacement of the Delia South parking lot, the resumption of the sidewalk gap and repair programs, as well as the replacement of 19 high-mileage police vehicles, the replacement of two snowplows, the completion of the replacement of all in-car cameras for police cars, including body cameras, and equipment for an esports arena. Finally, the Debt Service Fund totals $7.5 million and provides funding for the debt payments on outstanding road bonds and bonds for facilities renovations and a new DPW building. Voter-approved debt on the fire station is also included and will be paid off in 2024. And now, the three departmental budgets we are reviewing tonight. First up, city administration. The city administration is made up of two divisions with 59 full-time and nine part-time staff. The city administration budget totals $11.4 million and is split between the individual offices as shown here. The city administration budget increased by $1.25 million, or 12.3%. Personnel costs increased by $1 million due to the addition of 10 full-time positions resulting from the citywide manpower study and the advanced hiring of a purchasing manager who will be retiring at the end of this fiscal year. Contractual wage adjustments, an increase in pension funding, and higher health insurance premiums make up the rest of the increase. Other charges increased $250,000 due to the continued need for PPE and disinfecting, support for the financial software system, and the transfer of the citywide training budget to this office. The capital budget funds the modernization of the city hall elevators, a replacement vehicle for the assessing department, replacement personal computers, a replacement transit van and a Ford E350 for a snowplow, with a snowplow for facilities maintenance. Next is the fire department, which makes up over 20% of the general fund budget. The budget for the fire department includes 110 full-time and six part-time staff in three divisions. staff in three divisions, and is our second-largest cost center. The Fire Department budget totals twenty-three point seven million and consists of three separate divisions as pictured here. The total Fire Department budget represents a five hundred thousand or two percent increase over last year and is entirely due to personnel costs, contractual wage adjustments of just over five hundred thousand, and increase in pension funding of seven hundred and fifty thousand, offset by a reduction in overtime due to the six additional firefighters approved in last year's budget amendment. The Capital Budget includes a replacement Ford Explorer, two-striker power-load systems, replacement air packs and cylinders, a LifePack fifteen cardiac monitor, and thermal imaging cameras. And last for tonight is the City Development Department, which comprises five percent of the general fund budget. The department is made up of five divisions totaling forty-six employees. The total budget is five point six million and is comprised of five different divisions as depicted here. The departmental budget increased three hundred and eighty thousand, or seven point three percent, over last year. The increase is comprised of increased personnel costs of a hundred and sixty-five thousand due to the addition of a civil engineer, a planner, and two part-time code enforcement officers, as well as contractual wage adjustments, increased pension funding, and higher health insurance premiums. Also included here are wage increases for members of the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board, and the Board of Ordinance Appeals. These commission members have not had pay increases in many, many years. And that concludes my overview, Mr. Mayor, and now I will turn it back over to Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, and continuing on with our presentations, we're going to spend a little bit of time and talk about our incredibly important volunteers that help run the organization. As you know, we have, as you just heard, we have over four hundred full-time employees and close to six hundred and fifty employees in total, including part-time. But we also have a couple hundred volunteers that help us out at all sorts of different events and activities and initiatives and so on. And approximately a hundred and forty of those volunteers are part of our formal boards and commissions appointed by the mayor and city council. And what we've been exploring over the last six months is ways to improve the administration of our volunteer corps, including training, recruitment of volunteers, more user-friendly software for volunteers so that they can keep their applications up-to-date more readily, new equipment for volunteers, and so on. So we're very excited to provide this update to City Council, and our Special Projects Coordinator, Megan Ahern, will handle the presentation from this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, City Council, Mr. Kachubski, and Mr. Vanderpool. I'm here this evening to present an update on the city's boards and commissions program. As you may know, the city has twenty-six boards and commissions that are operated by a staff liaison along with volunteer members of the community. Their job is to advise and assist in carrying out functions of local government, and to provide a critical reservoir of knowledge and community input that informs city policy decisions and operations. So instead of going through the list of twenty-six boards and commissions, let's explore the influence that the boards and commissions have on our community. For instance, we have the Ethnic Community Committee, the Community Alliance, and the Youth Advisory Board, that all host events celebrating different cultures, and in their different ways work toward improving awareness and promoting diversity in the community. We have the Sustainability Commission, Solid Waste Management Commission, Water Service Advisory Council, that all work towards a goal of creating policies that help maintain a clean, safe, and sustainable environment in Sterling Heights now and for the future. We have the Board of Ordinance Appeals, Arts Commission, and Beautification Commission, that all add to the aesthetics of the community by encouraging residents and businesses to keep their properties neat and trimmed, and also creating focal points in the city through the commission of art displays. The Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Commission ensure the land in Sterling Heights is being developed in the most beneficial way for the residents, businesses, visitors, and also adheres to the city's masterland use plan. City Council is responsible for appointing members to the twenty-six boards and commissions that I previously mentioned. However, the city is also home to other equally important volunteer programs, such as the African-American Coalition, the Community Foundation, the Clergy Forum, and the Drug-Free Commission. Of course, there were a lot of boards and commissions that weren't mentioned, but you get the idea of how far-reaching and important these boards are to the community as a whole. Needless to say, the work that our boards and commissions do is integral to continuing to build a vibrant, inclusive community that is safe, active, progressive, and distinctive. So what is our current board member makeup? As previously stated, we have twenty-six boards and commissions, and within those twenty-six boards, there is a total of one hundred and seventy-five seats available. Currently, we have about nine vacancies, which leaves about one hundred and sixty-six filled seats. Of those one hundred and sixty-six seats, there are one hundred and thirty-nine unique individuals. That means there's an overlap of around twenty-five people that are serving on two or more boards, which is a great thing. That means we have several board members that have graciously dedicated their time to various city initiatives. However, this leads to one of many concerns that we have with our current program. First is the need to generate interest in the city boards and commissions. There are approximately two hundred and twenty-five applications currently on file. This only accounts for about point three percent of the eligible population in Sterling Heights. So while it's wonderful that we have dedicated members of our community that want to help in more ways than one, we could be overburdening those individuals, making it difficult to place full focus on one initiative. And overlapping board members also removes the opportunity to diversify the boards and welcome new and different perspectives. Next, we use a combination of dated software. We use the city website to accept applications online, but then those applications must be saved as a PDF file. The information contained in the application must be transferred by hand from the PDF to the Excel spreadsheet, which houses the database of boards and commissions' information. And finally, the PDFs are stored in a file folder on the city's computer network. It's a very choppy, tedious process that is far from efficient. And while we're on the topic of the application, it is terribly long and can be confusing, which can create a headache for the front-end user trying to fill it out, and then for the back-end staff user who must try to decipher what the applicant was trying to say. The next concern is that the city website is not always consistent and up-to-date. Each separate board has its own page, and each page must be separately maintained. When a new member is appointed, or a current member leaves, the website does not always get updated right away. And lastly, we have a limited Boards and Commissions member orientation program. Because meetings are often subject to the Open Meetings Act, and members are subject to city policies with regard to ethics, dress code, and attendance, it is important that we send a consistent message to all appointees. Most members receive a minimal orientation and training with their board liaison, but we need something more robust and consistent across all boards. So some of the solutions that we came up with to counter the existing problems is that, the first one that was approved on March second was the purchase of the new software system. And then the second solution is to hire a part-time Boards and Commissions Management Services Specialist. So what are some of the benefits of the new software system? First, it's going to bring all the information together from the multiple different sources under all, under one program. It will be user-friendly for staff, city council, and potential applicants. The information will be organized and streamlined into an easy-to-read format, and we already have familiarity with the software via the On Base Agenda Management System. Additionally, it will be an automated process. All of the information will be in one place. It'll be easily searched for applications, current member information, vacancies, and historical information. The software will send out reminders to members about reappointment, notifications to renew applications, and inform liaisons when new members are appointed. Some of the benefits of our dedicated Boards and Commissions staff member is that they will organize recruitment efforts and generate interest in our boards and commissions to ensure a diverse, knowledgeable, dedicated pool of applicants is always available to fill vacancies. They will work with the Community Relations Department to coordinate public outreach efforts. They're going to streamline the application, update the Boards and Commissions handbook, and more importantly, develop and administer an orientation program for newly-appointed members, including training on the new city-provided iPads for the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. Additionally, they will ensure that new members are timely in taking their oath of office and bridging the gap between member and liaison by being the point person for all boards and commissions. They will manage the Boards and Commissions software database, keep info up-to-date, and maintain the pool of applicants. They will, from time to time, provide city council, administration, and liaisons reports as necessary. They'll track performance indicators to measure the success of the program, and recommend policies and procedures to better manage the Boards and Commissions program. So our timeline, as previously mentioned, the software was approved in early March, and we began the discovery process last week with the contractor. The interview process has begun for the new, the hiring of the new Part-Time Management Services Specialist, and we expect to have the position filled in the next month. By July, we will have wrapped up the new recruitment efforts and begin carrying out our plan. And we expect by August that we will have the software built out and implemented, and I will continue to work with this staff member to clean up any other outstanding issues. In conclusion, City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions have an immense, far-reaching impact on the entire community. They provide a vast array of functions, such as improving the city's appearance through public art and beautification efforts, developing innovative plans for future development, promoting diversity and cultural awareness through events and forums, providing consistent and fair judgments for a variety of appeals, integrating policies and programs that consider the perspective of the youth of the city, all of which ultimately improve the quality of life for all of our residents and businesses. With that in mind, it is imperative that we do everything possible to transform our current Boards and Commissions program into a more streamlined, efficient, and consistent model that matches the extraordinary efforts placed on so many other recent Sterling Heights initiatives. I am confident that implementing the new software and hiring a Boards and Commissions dedicated staff member will provide us the starting point we need to properly and efficiently organize the Boards and Commissions program, which will also facilitate the implementation of our improved recruiting efforts. This is guaranteed to be a huge undertaking, but the benefits to the city will be well worth the time and effort. And as a quick side note, the city recognizes the hundreds of volunteers that Mr. Vanderpool was mentioning annually at our Volunteer Banquet. Unfortunately, last year, the banquet was canceled due to the COVID pandemic. However, this year, the city is already making plans, and as long as the state guidelines allow for it, we can expect the Volunteer Banquet to be held this October. More details will follow as we get closer to the event date. And that is all I have. Thank you.
And Mayor, I just wanted to thank Megan for her good work putting this plan together. You can see a lot of time and effort went into it, and you can see that undoubtedly this is going to make a big difference in how we administer, recruit, and train our boards and commissions and other volunteers that serve the city. And now, shifting gears to the Fire Department. Needless to say, this has been just an incredibly challenging year for the entire organization, but certainly the Fire Department as well. It took just an enormous amount of work to get our vaccine centers up and running, but even prior to that, just making sure that the community was in line with all the COVID protocols, including our own organization, took a lot of time and effort. And on top of that, we had all the normal challenges that we might have in any given year, not the least of which includes the challenges in dealing with the illegal marijuana grow operations in residential areas that's affecting cities all across Michigan, but especially in the metropolitan area. So at this point, I'm pleased to introduce the Fire Chief, Kevin Edmund, to talk about these topics some and present the budget, and also we have with us our Assistant Fire Chief Ed Miller, who will be contributing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, and members of council. What we would like to do tonight is myself and Assistant Chief Miller would like to present an overview of where we're at with the COVID vaccination efforts, along with our current budget process, and a little bit about the illegal marijuana grow that we're experiencing. With the COVID-19, we have been in this process of the response, and I am awful proud of our members. Not only is our primary mission to reduce injuries and death and property loss from emergency medicals, hazmat materials, and other disasters, our members have rose to the occasion in this pandemic that we're currently under facing, along with that have worked collaboratively with the Sterling Heights Police Department and the illegal grow operations to abate those issues. With the efforts of our COVID-19, we've increased testing in both antibodies and antigen testing to help keep our employees safe. And then when vaccinations became available, we took the lead to undertake those. And the vaccination efforts that we have done is both at the Senior Center, assisted living and nursing homes on the weekends with strike teams, and Lakeside Sears. So the Senior Citizen Vaccination Center was stood up on February twenty-fourth with the efforts of the Fire Department, and to date, we estimate that we have done close to five thousand vaccinations at that site as of Saturday. The Assisted Living has been in a partnership with the Macomb County Health Department, where we have gone out with strike teams to vaccinate our most vulnerable populations that are at this assisted living and nursing homes. And then the last thing that we've done is we stood up the Vaccination Center on March thirty-first at the Lakeside Sears site, and we've had great success with that. This has been a collaborative effort, though, along with our city departments, DPW, with setting up the site as far as traffic flow, with facilities and IT support to help run it, with the Human Resource Department to help us with staffing, and with the County Health Department to provide nursing support for the site, and with Silver Pine Medical Groups to work with us on Saturdays for this event. And lastly, Shelby Township to partner with us for the vaccination efforts, and we stood that up on March thirty-first. A little bit about what's happened for the past ten days. From March thirty-first to April tenth, combined with the Senior Center and Lakeside, we have given almost thirty-four hundred vaccinations. So with our best estimate, we believe that fifteen to twenty percent of our population has been vaccinated, so that's over twenty-two thousand residents. And we've been able to do this with some of the CARES funding that we've got, and also the AFG grant that we got earlier in the year. And now I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Chief Miller.
Good evening. Just get to talk to you a little bit about the successes we've had with our, in our current budget year, and how that impacts us going forward. So far this year, we were able to hire six people due to the efforts of writing for a FEMA SAFER grant, which has provided us funding for six firefighters. At this time, we have five ambulances staffed twenty-four hours a day, where in previous times, we were staffing the fifth one by overtime as it was able to be filled. So that is a huge increase in our ability to deliver services to the citizens. This SAFER grant is a three-year SAFER grant that's provided under Assistance of Firefighters, and we also receive grant funding through the Assistance of Firefighter Grants for health and wellness and safety, allowing us to put every one of our firefighters through health, wellness screening, cancer screening, blood and cardiac monitoring, as well as new exercise equipment to keep us in good shape and meet NFPA guidelines for our jobs. Capital purchases that we have or are in process right now are the purchase of a fire pumper that is replacing a pumper that's from nineteen ninety-eight with a hundred and eighty thousand miles. In the future, we'll still have one that's a hundred... In the future, we'll still have one that's a 1999 pumper that you'll probably see in the future. But our fire engines are well taken care of by our fleet services, but eventually do need to be replaced. We have a battalion cheese vehicle that is in process right now to be replaced, that is staffed by our shift supervisors, and then we have an inspector's vehicle that was purchased to replace an older Crown Victoria police vehicle that we used for many years. And a couple other things, our four gas monitors, we use those for evaluating hazardous environments and making sure that the atmospheres are safe for both the occupants and for our firefighters. Those were over 15 years old and are due for replacement. And our thermal imaging camera, we have one that has been replaced and is put into service in Station 2's area. We are also working on, we had worked on concrete replacement at the front apron of Fire Station 3, and also maintenance and upgrades to our Fire Training Tower, Fire Station 5, including a shipping container-style training addition to help with live-fire burns with our firefighters. Currently, over half of our firefighters are six years' experience or less, so this will really increase our ability to train them and have them ready for the events that they may come in contact with. Other things that we have... Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the wrong one. Other facility improvements, and I really wish you could have seen my other pictures. They were good. Sorry about that. Our facility improvements at Station 5 continue. That's a building that is our oldest in our inventory, built in 1992. So we have new PPE gear lockers that have been in place that work better with maintaining our gear and equipment, remodeled exercise room to fit some of the equipment we got under our AFG grant, removing old wallpaper in the administrative offices and painting. The 1992 motif is gone, and we've improved it a little bit. And then added a roof covering over the patio on the operation side of Station 5 to reduce water intrusion on windows and doors. And also in our current budget, which was a budget process that we look for fire prevention, was a fire extinguisher training program. The fire extinguisher training program is going to allow us to get into our business community and offer them fire extinguisher training without using current extinguishers that could cause damage or be harmful to the environment using dry chemical powder. Much cleaner, allows us to do it in all different types of weather conditions, which our business community will really appreciate, and will also use that at other events such as fire open house and other community outreach programs. In fire prevention, we also added Mobilize Fire Inspection Program. Up to recently, our inspectors have been writing their inspection reports on triplicate paper, then going back to the office and having to type everything in, a very inefficient use of their time. With Mobilize, it allows them to do electronic inspection reports, immediately giving feedback to the business owners on what corrective actions they need to do, and that'll make them more efficient in the field and keep our increasing amount of inspections going the route that they are going. We also have Safe Homes Initiatives, which we deal with hoarding issues for homes or marijuana grow issues. Having a safe home, a safe residence in our communities is important to us. As Mr. Vanderpoel said, this is not just a Sterling Heights issue, both for hoarding or for marijuana grows, this is something that happens throughout the metro Detroit area. The difference is, is our Fire Inspection Division has taken a proactive approach to dealing with these problems and addressing them so that we can control them. So far this year, there's been 340 homes that have been abated or mitigated alone just for illegal grow of marijuanas, which is going to impact our neighborhoods. So that's a brief review of what we've done so far this year. I know there's many more projects that we're working on, but I'll turn it over to Chief Edmund to continue with our proposed budget.
As we go forward with our proposed budget, one of the ongoing projects that we have is the changeover of our SCBA's. This was a project that was started in 2019. We had to replace about 66 units. NFPA service life for these units is about 10 years or two cycles of NFPA improvements. And up to date, we have purchased 36 air packs in the last two years, and the remaining 25 air packs will be purchased over the next 18 months with the budgets. The next thing is the cardiac monitor. The life expectancies of these units are about 10 years. We have two current monitors that are in the Training Bureau that are Life Pack 12s that need to be replaced. And once we replace one of those, which were slated for this upcoming budget, we'll be putting that new one on the ambulance and then taking him and rotate him, so the older units will actually be used for training. And right now, there's a big difference between a Life Pack 15 and a Life Pack 12. The next thing is the striker power load system. Most of the agencies that have moved towards these power load systems has increased safety. What can happen is what we call a patient drop, and this happens in between loading and offloading, where the safety mechanism on the back of the ambulance with the stretcher that doesn't have a power load needs to catch a hook device. And then this apparatus will greatly reduce that. It also reduces workers' comp claims and major back injuries. Most EMS units that have put this in place have reduced their workers' comp claims by 50 to 80%. The next and exciting program is the Fire Cadet Explorer Program. This is where we're going to engage the youth as a method to enhance our diversity. The membership is going to be the junior and seniors in high school with a grade point average of 2.5. This is a program that we feel we're looking for about 12 to 20 students with the different high schools. We're going to touch the high schools right now that currently have EMS or fire training in there, and then reach out to the other schools that don't to see what kind of partnerships we can form and to get people engaged in the firefighting service. One of the last things is the Blitz Monitor. This was an ongoing project. The last purchase this year will complete this project, and this is used to fight heavy fires in factories and warehouses and apartment and large homes with limited access when we need to flow large amounts of water. Another exciting project that we're looking to undertake is the accreditation process. This accreditation process will help us define our missions and related objectives. It's going to provide greater community alignment with what we're doing as an organization through creating work groups where we will bring in residents, city leadership, and the business community to help us define what our strengths and weaknesses are. And then all these decisions that we make going forward will be supported by data. This will establish a plan for us for improvements into the future. And the last thing is just a few maintenance items, the facility, parking lot at Station 4, some staff vehicles, continuing of the Command and Leadership Program, which is partially reimbursed, and also our ongoing CPR efforts to the public, once we can reengage the public when COVID-19 kind of lifts. And the last thing is our performance objectives, and this, it really ties back into accreditation, where we're going to be looking at our transport calls or fire calls or senior unit responses and using that accreditation process to help us move forward. And that is my presentation for tonight.
And thank you. We appreciate the good work of the Fire Department, especially during this incredibly unusual past year. And moving on, we'll now talk about our City Development Department, and we're going to focus more on our Safe Homes Task Force and all the good work that's being done there. And this is all under the umbrella of the Sterling Heights Initiative for Neighborhood Excellence, better known as SHINE. We developed this initiative many years ago, and it's continuing to pay big dividends. A couple of initiatives that fall under the SHINE banner is just our normal code enforcement program, which we've really doubled in size over recent years, again, to make sure, as I said when I started out early on, that we're doing all that we can to maintain strong property values in the community and that our neighborhoods look neat and orderly and inviting. That's all under the SHINE banner. So we're also going to spend a little bit of time talking about the social worker position, which I highlighted, and then we're going to transition into road discussion. So I'm pleased to introduce now our City Development Director, Jason Castor.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to provide you with an update on a few city development topics. I will provide an update on some department changes that temporarily were implemented and some that are still in place as a result of COVID-19. Next, I would like to provide an update on our Small Business Relief Program, the Safe Homes Task Force, and then conclude with an update regarding Boards and Commissions that assist the City Development Department. While there is always someone in the office to help residents or developers if they come to City Hall, the Development Department staff has a reduced presence in the office, continuing to work remotely due to COVID. Departments and staff made adjustments to perform job duties from home while allowing development to continue. The remote desktop feature allows those working from home to have full access to their office computer, in addition to an application that has been added to cell phones, allowing staff to receive and make calls from their home as if they were sitting at their desk. Staff will continue working in this hybrid fashion until we are back in the office at Developments and permits can be and are preferred to be submitted digitally for building, planning, and engineering. Many submissions involve follow-up virtual meetings with shared screens to discuss the project. Driven by COVID, there's no shortage of virtual services for a quick meeting with a developer. Inside-out permits were a result of the reduced capacity restrictions, allowing businesses to expand their presence outside their brick-and-mortar building. These permits have a quick turnaround and can be submitted to the Planning Department Also, in addition to reduce in-person contact and as a safety measure for residents and staff, virtual inspections are now available for a number of different inspections in the different trade categories. With the increase in project activity that typically comes with summer months, we expect more virtual inspections to be scheduled. Let's transition into code enforcement. Code enforcement's role is working with the property owners to eliminate blight, keeping our city and neighborhoods aesthetically pleasing, and keeping property values high through strict enforcement of the Property Maintenance Code. Early on in the pandemic and under the stay-home, stay-safe order, code officers were inspecting essential businesses' parking lots for discarded PPE. Officers would make regular contact with business owners regarding trash and debris and verifying they have a sweeper scheduled. As a result, 560 parking lot inspections were completed, 154 issues were reported to owners, and seven parking lots were set up for sweeping by code enforcement. During this time, the Board of Ordinance Appeals meetings were canceled from March through June as a precaution against the spread of COVID-19. As a result, the traditional violation notices and enforcements were replaced with warnings. Also during this time period, you may recall lawn contractors were not allowed to work. This lined up with a typically busy start to the mowing season and tall grass violations. When tall grass violations were found, warnings were provided, and then followed up with a grass tag for the contractor to service if the lawn remained in violation. In July, started the return to normal procedures and return of the Board of Ordinance Appeals meetings, and through the code enforcement process, we have a high success rate of around 97% of cases being resolved before a city contractor needs to abate the violation. This graphic shows the impact to the grass violations last year. Shown here, years 2018 and 2019 are typical years for grass violations. Typically, the busiest months are May and June, and in 2020, these numbers were greatly reduced. The grass-cutting season for code starts next month, and we are expecting these numbers to return to normal levels. Shown here is a before and after picture with the improvement that a single lawn mowing can have on a property. This graph shows the impact of violations comparing the two previous years, shown in the red and blue line, to last year, shown in yellow. The drop noticed in February to June was a result of temporarily altering the code enforcement model. While code enforcement can sometimes get a bad reputation, it is reassuring to receive compliments from residents, letting us know that they recognize and appreciate the hard work that the code officers do. Continuing with impacts related to COVID, the Small Business Relief Grant was created to help businesses that were struggling as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. This program was open for applications from February 1st to March 5th, and the eligibility criteria was set up broad to attract a wide variety of businesses while upholding the Community Development Block Grant and federal grant requirements. When the application window closed, the applications needed to be reviewed and scored. The review team made up of the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce, city staff, verified eligibility, and provided scores. The scoring criteria was based on the impact COVID had on the business, total number of employees, revenue loss, and jobs retained or created. After all the information submitted, applications verified, and businesses scored, the owners will be contacted to submit a detail of eligible reimbursement costs and return the provided grant agreement. Once their agreement is fully executed, a check will be mailed to the owner. This graph shows a breakdown of the 66 applications submitted. Not surprisingly, the list shows the largest group requesting funds is in the restaurant, dining, and beverage category. With the help of the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce, we were able to complete the initial review of all applications while working with the many businesses to get all required information submitted. Currently, about half the applications are in the grant agreement phase, and ultimately, the number-one goal is to help these businesses receive funding to help with a lost revenue. I would like to switch gears a little bit from COVID and provide an update on a very important city initiative, the Safe Homes Task Force. This task force commenced in late 2019 as a result of a dog hoarding case. As of today, we handled 15 cases, 10 of which are still active. And while hoarding cases do not come up very often, we always want to try and help the owner, as well as making sure that the home is not negatively affecting adjacent properties. These cases often require a lot of work from the fire marshal and building official who are very involved with these properties. These properties are not easily identifiable from the outside. The property may be found by medical event or brought to the city's intention by a concerned neighbor or friend. A homes assessment form is completed, often with the assistance of the staff fire, to help identify the level of the case. Completed assessments are entered into the BSNA software, prompting Safe Homes Task Force members to input additional information on the property. This could include information regarding unpaid taxes, water bills, or a history of code issues. The form shown here guides staff to determine the course of action when they have concerns regarding a house. The form is useful as the process can be difficult and often infrequent. The pictures and contact information are beneficial for onsite staff when they are completing this assessment. Shown here is the assessment form completed by staff as they evaluate the status of the house. These reports are saved in BSNA, with any additional reports providing a single location for all information on the property. Now let's briefly go through the different levels we may encounter. Shown here is what we would find with a Level 1 and 2, some minor clutter, and as the level increases, the issues start to get worse, including overflowing trash and blockage of exits. When conditions get to Level 3 and 4, additional apartments are called in. In the case of a Level 3, the clutter is starting to accumulate outside, and the police department is called in for a wellness check. For Level 4 conditions, we start to see insect infestations, rotting food, and at the Level 4, if not already on scene, onsite, the police department, fire department, and building official are called to the scene. These homes are provided 30 days to make progress on the home. And lastly, Level 5 cases are determined when we find animal infestations, kitchens and bathrooms unusable due to clutter, in addition to the disconnection of essential services of water or electricity. These homes, due to the conditions, are considered uninhabitable and temporary housing is located for the individual. The home is locked by city personnel until a course of action or remedy is provided. A lot of work goes into tracking and keeping up with these cases, and city staff is doing a great job. And while the number of cases may be small... And while the number of cases may be small, the work which includes contacting family members, following up with local and state agencies, and cleaning up the property can require a significant time commitment. Hoarding is considered a mental illness, and while staff does their best, they do not have the professional training to provide the help and support the residents need. This is why the city is currently working on a plan to form a public-private partnership for a full-time social worker to provide assistance and follow-up for these cases, as well as assisting other departments in need. More in-depth update regarding this critical position will be provided by the police department at the April 27 budget meeting. I would like to conclude my presentation tonight with an update regarding three boards and commissions that report to the City Development Department. These boards are made up of 30 residents who help us do our jobs. The Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Board of Ordinance Appeals Members hear cases that range from simple deck encroachments to multimillion-dollar corporate investments that can yield hundreds of jobs, or blight cases that can affect an entire neighborhood. The responsibility of the board is to provide a recommendation regarding the case before them, a case in front of the Board of Ordinance Appeals could result in a recommendation to have a city contractor clean up a blinded property. This year's budget includes pay increases for these boards. The current rate and proposed rates are shown here. If fewer to convert the existing pay for these boards, the members would average around $6 an hour. Also included in the budget are iPads and increased training for Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals members. Each of the Planning Commission and ZBA members are scheduled to receive iPads, which includes a keyboard and cellular service. These board members often put many hours of time reviewing case backup material, and this equipment is vital for the board members so that they can review multiple-page documents, easily zooming in where needed, and making notes. The iPads will be used at the meetings where they can review their comments with the applicants and fellow board members. Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals are also proposed to receive an increase in their training budget. With important decisions that these boards make, it is imperative that they are receiving the training to stay up-to-date with current trends. The increase is per member and includes alternates. This per-member training is in addition to the annual training provided by the city's legal team. The legal team reviews issues, questions, concerns with the board, and may also practice a simulated meeting or case with each board. These changes were brought about after hearing from board members, reviewing the time commitment required, and considering the important cases these members act on, which have an impact on the entire community. Thank you for your time and allowing me to provide these updates and highlighting some silver linings that have come out of the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Mayor, we'd now like to continue on with our road program that's scheduled for the next year, another really big year for road improvements, and also we're going to highlight our sidewalk program, which will be back in play this year, and also a number of other connectivity points that we're making throughout the community somewhat related to our sidewalk program. And leading this discussion will be our city engineer, Brent Beashaw.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mr. Kachubski, Mayor Taylor, and members of council. Let me get my presentation up. All right, so like Mr. Vanderpoel said, I'm here to present the 2021 Plan for Road and Sidewalk Construction. There's much to present, so let's get to it, and I'd like to start with our road construction plans. The roads highlighted in orange on the map shown will be under construction in 2021. The intersections with the orange triangles will receive signalization upgrades. The road projects are also listed on the right. The first project out of the gates will be the Shaner Road Project. This federally-funded project began in the fall of last year with the curb replacement along the median, and it will resume later this week, actually, and is scheduled to be completed in July. The project is an asphalt resurfacing project, but also includes significant work to the four bridges within the project limits. Due to the bridge work, full road closure is needed, and northbound Shaner will be closed this Thursday for a short time to complete that work. Detours will be posted, and message boards have been up indicating the closures that are upcoming. The largest project of the year will start construction, and that's the Innovate Mound Project. This project will address the poor pavement condition as well as congestion. The project will start on the section of the road from M-59 to 18 Mile Road, and I'll provide a brief update on this project on the next slide. A project to resurface Metro Parkway is scheduled to begin this fall. This section of roadway will begin east of Van Dyke and go through the Dodge Park intersection. It's a county's goal to complete this project in the fall, but the project may extend into the spring of next year. The city will be resurfacing 19 Mile Road from Dequinder to Ryan, and this project will start late summer and be completed this fall. The Oakland County Road Commissioner will begin a project near the end of April to clean up Dequinder Road from south of Metro Parkway to 18 Mile Road with concrete repairs. This project is a continuation of the work done south of Metro Parkway a few years ago. Importantly with this project, the intersection of Metro Parkway and Dequinder will be addressed, which is in pretty bad condition. MDOT will be performing concrete repairs on M-59 between Ryan and Van Dyke this summer. This work will be about a six-week project, and this will be a night and weekend project. A project to improve signals at the four intersections shown has already begun. The two locations will receive masked arms, the Metro Parkway intersection with Dodge Park and Shaner Road. This summer, the county will be making concrete pairs to westbound Metro Parkway east of Shaner. There will also be a significant improvement in our local roadway system. In total, the city expenditure of $20 million is in order, leveraging $105 million in major road construction. As I previously mentioned, the Innovate Mound Project will begin this summer. The main items in this project includes nine miles of pavement reconstruction from 696 to M-59, with a fourth lane added north of 17 Mile Road. There'll be geometric improvements, traffic operation improvements to provide for a safer roadway to travel. There'll be traffic signals, modernizations, drainage improvements, new street lighting, non-motorized improvements, which includes a path on the west side of Mound Road, and new landscaping improvements. The Mound Road Project is currently out for bids, with bids due back in May. The project will be broken into three segments. So Segment 1, as I mentioned, is from M-59 to 18 Mile Road. Segment 2, which is year 2022, will be from 18 Mile Road to 14 Mile Road, and in 2023, Segment 3 will be under construction, which will be from 14 Mile Road to 11 Mile Road or 696. So it's anticipated that all the roadwork will be done and complete by the end of 2023, with 2024 used for restoration and other non-paving items. So let's now move on to the 2021 Local Road Construction Plan. Another $5.5 million will be expended as capital improvements to the local road system. The majority of this funding is from the voter-approved Safe Streets Initiative. Roads in poor conditions like the ones shown here, Lana Lane, Elm Crest, Lake Forest Drive, and Warsaw will be improved. And full road reconstruction will take place on these 16 streets: Fulton Drive, Lake Forest Drive, Corolla Drive, Poterick, Chris, and Pompano Drive, Lana Lane, Independence Drive, Vassar Court, Matlock Drive, Kirkton Drive, John to Court, Donna Drive, Irwin Drive, Sylvan Drive, and Warsaw Drive. This covers a total of 2.6 miles of local road reconstruction. Additionally, our sectional replacement program will address large sections of pavement on West Chester Drive, Coriander, Arcola, Sorento, Monterey and Littlefield, Elm Crest Drive, Shell Drive, Danforth, Wood Villa, Carmel, and Alta Vista Drive. In total, 1.4 miles of sectional pavement is included in the budget. So between both programs, we have over four miles of pavement that will be addressed. To take a quick look back at our progress since the onset of the Safe Streets Initiative, the number of roads in good condition has increased from 7% to 20%, and the positive trend will continue with these 2021 improvements. And I'd now like to turn our attention to the 2021 Sidewalk Construction Plan. At the Strategic Planning Session in 2020, a plan was highlighted to complete remaining priority sidewalk gaps. Although the Sidewalk Gap Program was unable to be funded last fiscal year, much work was still completed. With the Sidewalk Gap Program funded in this proposed budget cycle, 2021 will see many improvements to complete priority sidewalk gaps. The map shown highlights the sidewalk network. Orange indicates existing walk, where pink indicates an existing trail. Red is a sidewalk gap that has been completed over the last 10 years, and the year that it was completed is next to it, and the green indicates an existing sidewalk gap. So to provide a quick overview of the progress made on the sidewalk system, over 13 and a half miles have been completed over the last 10 years through road projects, Sidewalk Act Program, and part of site development. In 2020, 1.3 miles of sidewalk was installed. Highlighted projects include the 18 Mile Road Sidewalk, which created a continuous walk along 18 Mile Road from Dequinder Road to Dodge Park and City Hall Campus. Also, many gaps were closed on Saul Road to make the area 100% walkable and connected the neighborhood to the Dodge Park Trail System, among other points of destination. In 2021, improvements to the sidewalk network will continue, and I'd like to highlight some of those improvements now. As part of the 19 Mile Road Project, the sidewalk at the intersection of 19 and Shaner will be constructed early in 2021. Matter of fact, construction just started yesterday on this. The sidewalk closes the last gap on 19 Mile Road for an over two-and-a-half-mile road stretch, and the last gap on Shaner for over a three-mile stretch. And a special thanks to the Utica Church of Christ for their cooperation to complete the sidewalk gap. On Mound Road, a pathway will be constructed along the road improvements from M-59 to 14 Mile Road. This will fill many gaps and provide a great non-motorized transportation option. Along with the site improvements, Ford is completing at the Transmission Plant. A sidewalk will also be installed along their frontage from 18 Mile Road to 18 and a half mile road. This important priority sidewalk gap completion will tie together north and south Van Dyke. Through the sidewalk gap programs, gaps on Clinton River Road will be closed from Hayes to Saul Road, thus providing continuous walk to the Dodge Park Trail System and among other destinations. The last remaining gaps on Dequinder will be filled in, making a continuous walk from 14 Mile Road to Dobie Drive. Sidewalk gaps at the intersection of 14 and Van Dyke will be constructed. Among other benefits, this will aid in the crossing of Van Dyke, tying in the residential community to the east to the commercial area. The sidewalk gaps on North Van Dyke will be completed, and that ties into the recent trail connection off Van Dyke and the walk constructed with the Canal Road-Van Dyke project a couple of years ago. The closure of the cul-de-sac gaps, such as this one on Hanson Drive, will be completed. And the last remaining gaps on the east side of Ryan Road north of 17 will be completed, and this will complete all the gaps on the east side of Ryan Road through the city limits. The city will also be looking at improving pedestrian safety at a few locations, namely at 15 and Van Dyke and at Dodge Park Road near Stevenson High School. At the 15 Mile Road location, a pedestrian island is looked to be installed at a dead zone in the center turn lane. The best location cannot be determined to date due to traffic impacts from the schools and businesses closed, but we will be reviewing to find the best location for this island once the traffic patterns resume to normal. As we mentioned, at the Strategic Planning Session in 2020, sidewalk costs have significantly risen over the last decade. The low-bid pricing in 2010 provided a cost of $2.43 a square foot for four-inch sidewalk installation. Likewise, in 2012, a low bid yielded a cost of $2.62 a square foot. In 2019, the low price yielded a cost of $7 a square foot, which is an increase of nearly three times that of the 2010 cost. This unit cost equates to a cost of per 100 feet of frontage of $1,215 in 2010 to a cost of $100...to a cost per 100 feet of frontage $3,500 in 2019 for concrete construction costs alone. As sidewalk construction is the property owner's responsibility, the city is proposing a policy change to the city sidewalk gap program to serve the purpose of reducing the financial burden on property owners. As noted earlier, sidewalk costs have nearly tripled within the sidewalk gap program over the last decade, and this provides a financial predicament for property owners. In order to alleviate the financial strain, the following is proposed to be pursued: Increasing the consent SAD loan from a five-year period to a 10-year period. This was the financing term. And to provide a low-interest loan on that term, it's proposed the city would use the prime interest rate, which is typically around 3%, and historically, we've used 6%. Providing a low-income assistance program where nothing is due until the time of the parcel property transfer. And lastly, providing an equitable financial cap on properties that is based on the increased costs seen over the last decade. The concept of this cap is to ensure all property owners are treated fairly and unit costs are comparable regardless to the time of sidewalk completion in relation to the market costs. The cap would be set at $5,000. The city has another sidewalk program that is focused on the maintenance of the existing sidewalk program, existing sidewalk system. The last program was recently invoiced. The average bill for over 1,000 parcels including the program was $833. So to provide owners...to help property owners finance the cost, interest was waived in the first two years of that loan, and that would be offered in this sidewalk gap program as well. This concludes my presentation on the 2021 Road and Sidewalk Construction. Thank you.
Thank you. We're especially excited with all the roadwork that's planned for the next year. I think you all would agree that, especially with a neighborhood road, when a new road is constructed in a neighborhood, it vastly improves that street, and residents then take the opportunity to replace drive approaches in some of their sidewalk, even if it may not be in the sidewalk program, or their driveways and so on, thus improving property. So this all is an investment, and once again, it flips back to making sure property values remain strong in our community. And now I'd like to transition to our last presentation, and this is an update on all the facility construction that we have going on. As many of you know, we thankfully completed the Recreating Recreation Project just before the COVID pandemic hit, and that was a $50 million endeavor, and we were able to get through the lion's share of it. The only thing we really have left to do with that project is to construct the Bachi Ball Court behind the senior center, and that'll be done this year. But just as COVID hit, we were commencing the renovation project of the City Hall, the Police Department, the library, and the court building, not to mention... Not to mention, we were just in the first phase of constructing a new DPW building, so you could imagine the major curveball that COVID threw with respect to these building renovations. But we're pleased to be able to announce tonight we're in the home stretch with these projects. And with us is Jared Bodoine, who's going to walk us through the projects and explain what all the work is involved.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Good evening, Mr. Kachubski, Mayor Taylor, and members of council. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to provide an update on the city center campus renovation project. For a quick review, I'd like to go over how we got where we are today. In the fall of Seventeen, the City of Sterling Heights partnered with Integrated Design Solutions to perform a facility condition assessment of the four city center campus facilities. This includes City Hall, the Police Station, Public Library, and 41A District Court. This involved inspecting the facilities, reviewing building plans, and interviewing staff members. The IDS team developed a comprehensive condition assessment, which took into consideration the age and design of each facility, building codes, workflow efficiencies, along with repair and replacement costs. In May of 2018, the city issued $20 million in capital improvement bonds to finance the renovation of these four facilities to be repaid by the general fund over a 20-year period. In June of 2018 through January of 2019, the city partnered with IDS to perform a programming and conceptual design study that identified deficiencies in workflow, building efficiencies, and maximized the proceeds of the capital funding obtained. In April of 2019, Roncelli was awarded the Agency Construction Manager contract to oversee the entire renovation construction process and work with IDS through the final design phases. In August of 2019, IDS began the final design phase, which included the production of construction documents, bidding documents, and construction services. November 2019 through February 2020, the renovation project was split into seven separate bid packages. Roncelli, IDS, and city staff vetted over 100 submitted bids and awarded contracts to 38 vendors that met or exceeded all specifications and expectations. In February of 2020, construction began at all four buildings, with a few departments working at off-site locations during the renovation. In March 2020, we all know COVID-19 shutdowns began, and significant portions of the renovation project were delayed three to six months due to limited staffing and production delays. The anticipated completion of all four buildings will be in June of 2021, with only minor punchless items to remain. Through the renovation project, the following infrastructure improvements were made. Structural columns were repaired, and concrete flags were replaced throughout the city campus. The loading docks at City Hall and Public Library were repaired. Additional waterproofing and drainage systems were added at all four buildings, and landscaping restoration will begin later this month. The Public Library and Police Station had new metal siding installed, encapsulating the existing exterior insulation and greatly improving energy efficiencies. The City Hall metal siding project will begin in late April. The existing plastic sheeting roofing system was replaced at all four buildings, with new 30-year, two-ply bitumen roofing systems with included two inches of additional insulation Heating and cooling systems were replaced, including ductwork, air handling units, and chillers. The addition of over 200 variable air volume, or VAV, boxes will significantly improve heating and cooling zones, as well as reducing hot and cold spots throughout the buildings. New digital heating and cooling controls have been installed throughout the campus, and interior insulation was added to increase energy efficiencies. Electrical switch gears and distribution panels were replaced, and numerous electrical improvements were made throughout, including the addition of emergency generators and additional power outlets. All inefficient lighting fixtures were replaced with new, high-efficiency LED fixtures, and new digital lighting controls have been installed, which will significantly reduce electricity usage across the campus. Plumbing repairs were made to the existing systems, and fixtures were replaced with new water-efficient, touchless fixtures. Water bottle filling stations have also been added throughout the campus. Significant changes were made to most of the building's floor plans, and most areas were demoed down to the substructures and reconstructed utilizing current building and energy codes. Significant security improvements were made at both the Police Station and Courthouse, including reinforced masonry walls, improved lobbies, additional security cameras, and bullet-resistant glazing upgrades. Final finishes for all buildings include new ADA-compliant transaction counters, custom intuitive millwork, resilient waterproof flooring, and updated wall coverings with splashes of color. Improvements to the building floor plans include an increase in collaboration spaces, break room spaces, conference rooms, and touchless hardware. The new open office layout significantly improved sightlines, including social distancing barriers, and drastically improved work conditions through improved lighting and heating and cooling. Furniture layouts are based on ergonomic designs and include sit-stand desks, fully adjustable chairs, and personal storage solutions. At the Police Station, the front lobby and security desk was reconstructed to allow for ADA compliance and provide additional security for police staff. Office areas have clear sightlines, and roll call areas are better suited for collaboration and training. Locker rooms receive new lockers with secure gun compartments, charging stations, and separate boot stowage. Showers were updated to individual shower stalls with updated finishes. And as you can clearly see, City Hall is brighter and much more welcoming with the ADA compliance at all transaction counters. The open office areas have now clear sightlines, and all employees can see the transaction counters. Storage units have been drastically reduced, and collaboration areas have been added. The city development area has also seen a very dramatic change from closed-off workspaces to open offices. Social distancing barriers have been included here as well. I've also provided a sneak peek of two very rarely seen areas: the Sterling Heights TV control room and the Sterling Heights IT server rooms. As you can see, both of these received much-needed technology upgrades. The Public Library has undergone a colorful transformation as per the request of the library director, Tammy Turgeon. The information desk, computer desks, and Friends Bookstore have all received splash of color and style. Fun accent lights decorate the building, and new custom millwork service desks contribute to the new open feel of the library. The old vertical slat ceiling has been replaced with solid deadening ceiling tiles with LED lighting. Staff areas have also received new finishes, furniture, and storage solutions to maximize space and time. At the 41A District Court, transaction counters have been redesigned to provide improved workstations for employees, ADA compliance for patrons, and increased safety. Courtrooms have been updated to comply with current building codes and receive new flooring, paint, and countertops. Office areas have opened sightlines with social distancing barriers, and individual offices have received new ergonomically-designed furniture. Jury rooms, the multipurpose room, and the break room have received modern updates through finishes and furniture. Last but certainly not least, the first phase of preserving and reinventing the city's Veterans Memorial has been completed with the relocation of the city's Brick Paver dedication area to the Upton House Walkway. The second phase is underway with the creation of the new memorial stone pads alongside the Police Station, and this phase will be completed in time for the Memorial Day celebration this year. As for the 2021-22 capital improvements, the first of a five-year elevator modernization project will begin this year with the city's oldest elevator residing at City Hall. This project will include new digital controls, code compliance, and reskining of the elevator and doors. The project will modernize eight elevators over the next five years at the City Hall, Police Station, Public Library, and 41A District Court Buildings. These buildings have also received new pumps and equipment in each elevator, with the final three elevators at Police being accomplished this year. The final phase of the three-year senior center roofing project will also be completed this year and will be funded through the Community Development Grant Program. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, in closing, I just want to thank all the directors and managers who presented tonight and have worked so hard to put their budgets together. You can see there's so much that goes into preparing the budget, and the activity that's going on throughout the organization, and I think you would all agree, is incredibly impressive. So thank you very much to them. And now, we'd like to turn our attention to the mayor and council to address any questions you may have. Please be reminded that the ordinance needs to be, the appropriations ordinance needs to be introduced tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Vanderpoel, is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? If not, move on to, well, I guess what we can do is, we can go to the ordinance introduction and have our discussions during that portion without any objection. So move on to the next item, which is to introduce a fiscal year 2021-2022 appropriations ordinance. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion. Mrs. Sarowski.
Give me a second to get there. Everyone else was doing this as well, so I figured I might as well take the hit. Okay. Okay, here we go. Still trying to find it.
All you need to say is, "Resolved to introduce the appropriations ordinance for the 2021-2022 fiscal year."
Resolved to introduce the ordinance, appropriations ordinance for the 2021-2022 fiscal year.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, council? Mrs. Sarowski, do you want to go first?
Sure, I can. I'm going to go to, I believe it was Mr. Bayshore through the chair to Mr. Bayshore. I have a couple of questions about the sidewalk gap program. So, Mr. Bayshore, we went through it pretty quickly, and I know that there was a couple of other council people that also had questions. So explain to us what, you were talking about the burden of the increased costs, nothing would be due until property transfer, the burden would be on the seller, is that my understanding? How is that, can you explain that again to us?
Yeah, the sidewalk construction is the property owner's responsibility.
Correct.
So what we've historically done is we offer a special assessment, which is payable over five years at a 6%. So what we are doing is to look to alleviate that financial burden through a series of steps. So one was to provide a lower interest rate, which is the current prime rate, whatever it would be at the time. The other one would be increase the length to 10 years for the special assessment. And the one you asked in particular was, you know, there was an option to not pay if there was a financial hardship until the property is transferred, and we have offered that in the past. And lastly, was to put a cap on the amount of cost that a property owner would be charged for sidewalk installation.
And what was that cap, Mr.?
The cap was $5,000.
That's what we thought, okay. I thought you-
Yeah, and for example, if you want to, I can run through a brief example, is, let's say a property owner had 300 feet of frontage, and they'd be responsible for, using 2019 pricing, that would be just over $10,000. So this would cap the financial burden at $5,000.
Which I do appreciate, because I live on a corner lot, and that would be my situation if I ever sold, so, which we do not expect to do for years to come. Okay, so that, thank you so much, Mr. Bayshore.
Welcome.
Since he is standing up there, Mayor, do we want to let the other council people, if they have any questions, go first, or do you want-
I think it'd be best to just have you go. There'll be musical chairs for them, but-
Yeah, okay. Trying to decrease the traffic, okay. Thank you. And then I just had a couple other, and actually, I think I'm gonna defer right now. I'm gonna be fine with, I don't have any further questions right now, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Council, anyone else? Mr. Red?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Bayshore, please. That's why we should go after they finish talking, it'd be easier. Through the chair, briefly, Mr. Bayshore, how many properties would you say a year really hit that hard cap of $5,000? Do you have an estimate for me? I guess, what's the average bill for sidewalk construction per home? I mean, are a lot of homeowners being affected by the $5,000, or is it like $1,700? What would the average cost be really for the average homeowner in the city?
It really varies, because when you get on major roads, you have different-sized parcels. You know, the major roads are where the sidewalk gaps are historically, because a lot of times they are older homes. So there are some parcels, you know, that maybe have 60 feet or 100 feet of frontage. Some of the ones on Dequender are a little bit, you know, on the smaller side, but there are some that have 300, 500 feet. So they're really, it's really, not really a typical length as you look at the city.
I have to say that if I got a bill from the city for $5,000 for sidewalk, I would about hit the floor, because that would be almost all of my extra spending money for a year, I want to say, just to pay for sidewalk. I've proposed in the past a plan to hopefully pass a, I call it sidewalk insurance, but a small tax that would completely refund our sidewalk program. It would generate about $1 million a year at $20 per home on average, which over 20 years would be about a $400 cost, and that way we could replace our about $1 million we spend on sidewalk per year. We spend about $1 million on sidewalk per year, correct? Which is assessed to the homeowners.
Through various programs, yeah. There's the replacement program and the gap program.
Because in my view, we'd take over the sidewalk repairs completely for the city, and we wouldn't have to assess homeowners anymore. Because I know that I'm not the only one, I'm sure my colleagues get those calls too, from homeowners, especially long-term homeowners in the city, that have gotten quite high sidewalk assessments. To kind of switch gears, reading in both the capital improvements plan and our budget, there is a line item for a M-59 trail project. Could you tell us a little bit about that? I didn't see it in your presentation, but we're paying for it this year.
We got a study that was funded through SEMCOG for a trail project along Dobie Road from Dequender essentially to Utica Road. So what you see, the line item in the budget, was for our share of that study.
It's just for the study? We're not actually putting in the sidewalk on Dobie or the trail?
Yeah, at this point, we're just completing the study, and yeah, there's no line item for the construction at the-
Well, I would hope, because I know that I spoke, I just recently spoke to some homeowners who abut Dobie Road, and they told me one thing they'd like is sidewalks, that they could get down the roadway and back. You know, I just spoke to them last night, actually. It's kind of weird how that works. Just briefly, oh, I know we talked about this in the past, you know, MDOT is moving to make, is it MDOT, or is it the county, moving to make Mound Road a four-lane roadway north of Seventeen Mile Road?
It's a county road.
County road, I'm sorry. And I know we got federal funding for it, but I'm still interested in why we're making it a four-lane roadway. I guess I'm not seeing the traffic patterns on Mound Road to make it a four-lane roadway. Maybe it's all because we have a grant, we're moving forward, it's kind of moot at this point, but I know talking to property owners on Mound Road north of Seventeen Mile, they're very upset that it's becoming a four-lane road. I have one property owner in particular who is blowing up my email box, saying that he believes it's going to make the road more unsafe, it's going to increase the speed. I guess I'm just concerned, we're building infrastructure for the future, and the future's kind of uncertain. Are we going to have the same kind of car system that we have now? Are we gonna, are we building infrastructure to nowhere? Because eventually we're going to have to replace this infrastructure. So I'm a bit concerned about adding an extra lane on the mound when the property owners, at least some of them, don't want it. And then we're going to have to pay for it when we eventually, when we replace it. So I guess what would your response be to those property owners who say that? I know you get the emails too, because you've talked to them, about the expansion of mound north of Seventeen Mile Road.
Yeah, and that was a talking point in our design meetings, and, you know, a vast traffic study was completed along the whole corridor that looked at, you know, traffic flow now, traffic- flow now, traffic flow future, safety improvements, you know, all sorts of things, how it's going to be laid out geometrically. And the traffic study came back saying that the fourth lane was needed to relieve congestion in the area.
I guess my concern, I don't dispute any of that, is that, how much are we reducing congestion by? A minute, two minutes? We're making it easier for people to drive through our city. I'm more concerned with people coming into our city and doing business here. I guess that's, that's my overriding concern when it comes to mound road. I guess that's all I have for you, Mr. Bayshore, thank you. To the chair, to the police, the fire chief, excuse me, Mr. Edmund. Chief? Hi, Chief, great presentation. I know we talked earlier today, but I just wanted to put a few things that we talked about to the, to the residents. Essentially, looking at the budget, we have a fire extinguishment division, and we only put out 240 fires last year. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So, most of what we do in the fire department actually is now ALS, is healthcare runs and things like that to, I guess rescue is the word, I guess, to keep people safe.
More of our calls are to deal with crisis events, which are EMS in nature, and both auto vehicle accidents, too.
And I talked with Mrs. Varney, and we came up with a number, and I was surprised to see this, that right now, I'm actually very excited, we're getting 86% collection rate on our EMS calls for our ALS ambulance, which I thought is way above projection and kind of exciting that we're having such a good, an ability to collect what we're owed for transportation. So, I saw that today, and I was very excited about that. And one thing I wanted to comment on your presentation was, your predecessor proposed a cadet program to improve diversity. Looking at your presentation today, are we altering that program somewhat to make it more of an explorer program? Could you expand upon that at all?
Yeah, we're kind of tradition, transitioning that a little bit. Due to COVID and everything, and only offering this cadet program to four individuals, we want to expand the net that we're doing. So, that's why we're kind of moving it to the high school students. So, instead of having four people in that program, we're trying to expand it between 12 and 20 is our target. We're going to go out in the spring and start advertising, and depending on COVID, hope to start something in August.
So, for the current budget, do you want to keep all the funds that were budgeted for this program? Are we going to be changing the line item for it? Or, I guess that's what I was interested in, because it ended up being the cadet program was over $100,000.
Yeah, what we would like to do is still include that tuition reimbursement program for the program, and then we'd need to look at the $65,000 that was in the part-time wages and see how much overtime that it might cost to have instructors work with the explorers. That was something, only 30 days into it, standing up the SIR site and everything. We got to kind of get up to speed on that.
You're doing a great job. I have no complaints, it's something I noticed. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, in case something else comes up.
Sure thing. Okay, council, anyone else? Mrs. Arco.
Reading my mind, Mr. Taylor. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'm going to go, I'm making comments and as I go along with the notes that I took during the presentations. And my first one is actually to Mrs. Varney. Mrs. Varney, you were mentioning the pension fund and how we need to put X amount of dollars into the pension fund. I know that's a voter-approved fund. Can you explain to the residents what year that was voted on?
Yeah, so that, the police and fire pension fund is funded by, it's called the Act 345 Millage. The voters voted on that in 1988, and it is not, it's not limited by Headley. When the voters voted on it, it is to cover however much the contribution to the pension fund costs. So, it goes up and down with the required contribution of the police and fire pension fund. But it is a voted millage back in 1988.
Thank you, and I think that explains a lot, you know, moving forward, when people question us about that fund, that we know that it was voter-approved at one time. And that's important, I think, for the residents to know. And I think I have a, the streetlights that we'll be replacing, is that in agreement with just DTE, or is that something that gets contracted out, like a bid process?
No, no, DTE actually does that. So, it would be a contract with DTE, they would come in, replace all of the lights, and then we would see the electricity savings.
Okay.
DTE owns the lights, so we can't really, you know, contract that work out to another contractor.
I get it. That's fine, at least I understand. And a lot of these, I think I know the answers to, but I think the residents need to know the answers, and they're not here to ask, so I'm going to ask for them. For the, okay, through the chair to Mrs. Ahern. For the new program that we're hoping to get, to keep track of all the boards and commissions, is there a transfer from what we already have into that program, or is it going to have to be done manually by a person?
I believe the contractor is going to help us transfer that information from our current files over to the new software.
So, it's not like an employee would have to do it, it's actually the contractor would do it for us?
Correct.
Okay, and how many of our boards and commissions are still meeting virtually now? Do you know?
You know what, I think the majority of them are meeting virtually. We don't really have too many that are meeting in person at the moment.
Okay, nothing further from Mrs. Ahern. Let me move to the fire department, but I have to tell you, I can't say enough good things about the way our firefighters had stepped up to handle the vaccination centers. There aren't enough words to express how grateful I am for what they're doing, because it truly is helping our community. And I hope other people realize that, that this is in addition to their other shifts that they have. They come in here, and yes, they do work, and they're being compensated for it, but they could be doing something else. And I think it's remarkable that when we looked for our, and asked our firefighters if they were willing to do this, we had over 70 that said that, yes, I will do this. And other communities that almost are as big as we are, they had a response of maybe three firefighters that were willing to help with a vaccination center in their city. So, I think that's saying a lot for the dedication that the men and women of the fire department have, and I certainly appreciate it. The illegal grows, through the chair to Chief Edmund. Wait, one more question before, as I move on to vaccinations. I think it was mentioned that 22% of this, we believe that 20% of our residents have been vaccinated. Does that include people that weren't vaccinated at one of our sites? In other words, there were some of us that were vaccinated off-site at hospitals. Does that number include us?
Yeah, what that number really does is it's an extrapolation of where the county's at, through different data metrics, where the state's at through their MICR registration, because no one has an exact 100% number. So, we're looking at ballpark figures, and we strongly believe that we're at that 20% to 22% of the community that's been vaccinated.
And I have to say that our firefighters are very diligent. We can, we're batting 1,000 at the senior center, that we have not wasted one dose. It has gone into somebody's arm. I, kudos to them for being able to find people, whether it be in the city or a business in the city, that they put in a call, we have an extra vaccine, can you get here in 20 minutes? And people will do it. It's amazing how they operate, and it is, it's stressful at times, but I certainly do appreciate it. The illegal marijuana grows. Tell us as a council what we can do to help as far as alleviating, you're not going to be able to stop all of the grows, but what can we do as a council to help in this effort to suppress them?
That's a big question to have to answer. Right now, we're, we've had about 340 houses that we've abated. We have another 160 that are in the process right now, going through it. We've dedicated roughly about 1,200 hours since last summer in that project in collaboration with the police department to do it. Again, this is a problem that's all over the metro area. We're being very proactive. So, we have to look at exactly what our needs are going forward with that. I know that when we dedicate an inspector to that time, it's taking away responsibilities for other things.
So, right now, we have a designated fire inspector just for the illegal marijuana grows, is that correct?
It's one of his primary functions right now with other complaints, is dedicated to those complaint issues that we have. And then, we just don't go out to, you know, the run-of-the-mill smells as much. Usually, there's significant problems there that have been put forward to us by, you know, people in the area, DTE, with high usage of electricity transformers that have malfunctioned in the area. Some of our brownouts have been caused by that.
Okay. And I guess for the fire explorers or cadets, I guess, is there a program that we're going to be using as an example when we set this in place? I know there's probably other ones throughout the country. But is this going to be more theory? Is it going to be hands-on? Is it going to be similar to our fire academy, where they're going to get, you know, several weeks of training, so that they would know what a firefighter actually does? And is there, do you have a program for, you know, set up for this yet?
Yeah, it's, it's a model program across the country that takes these young individuals and give them some limited education. We don't certify them when they're fire explorers for firefighting or EMS work, but we expose them to that. They will be working with our on-duty crews in ride-alongs. And then, we'll be looking at, you know, is it possible for them to come help, you know, refill air bottles and change cylinders at a fire scene as we go forward. But this is kind of a standard program that's done across the country for these young individuals.
And I appreciate us going through the accreditation process. I know it's a lengthy process, and it's just one more thing to add to everything else that's going on, but I appreciate it. You know, it's, you know, we're undertaking that task. So, and nothing further, but thank you. And you're doing a great job in such a short amount of time, and most of the time, we think you've been here for months, you know, and it hasn't been. But thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor?
I think she might have more.
Sorry, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
I did two minutes for a second, then I thought she-
Well, I didn't even know I was ready until the mayor asked me, so now I'm not done, so just hang on. So, I was going to go last, thinking everybody else would ask my questions, and then I wouldn't have to answer them all, or ask them all. City development. So, I think this would be for, I think this is for Jason, I believe. But how many in-and-out permits did we, did we provide last year? And how many do you think that, are we going to do the same program this year with the guidelines that are in place? What's the plan?
Yeah, last year, we probably had about a handful of these that came to the city to expand their business outside of their brick and mortar. This year, we expect, you know, with this recent surge, maybe some additional interest in the program, along with continued outreach, social media to promote this program, reaching out to these businesses that if they are interested. We have had some that have put them up and have already taken them down with some of the restrictions that have been recently lifted. So, you know, it's kind of uncertain how many are going to come back to us, or new businesses that would be interested. But the few that we have seen have been pretty high-quality, because, you know, that was out there, was a great example of, you know, the high-quality work that these businesses are putting into this work.
And we need to let the restaurants know that if, moving forward, as long as, they're welcome to do the same thing again this year, under the guidelines that are set up by the state?
Yep, yep. So, the program is scheduled to continue while we're under, you know, these restrictions, continuing on this year. And, you know, who knows when these restrictions are going to be completely lifted. So, the idea would be, you know, currently, it's active under the city emergency that we have right now, but continuing that, you know, would be beneficial, I think.
Okay, and then, the grants that businesses were permitted to, or asked to apply for, I think it needs to be explained that the city did not set up the criteria that it was set up for us. So, do you want to explain how that criteria was set up?
Sure. So, the money that's provided is money provided to the community development block grant. And with that, there are a lot of stipulations along the go with that. They have to be, to low-to-moderate income benefit to the business. So, if they have or retained low-to-moderate employees, created these positions, retained these positions, they would qualify. These are, you know, federal requirements that we don't have any control over. In order for us to provide these funds to the businesses, we have to make sure that once we provide that money to them, there's no chance of the federal government, when they audit us, that we have to, as a city, repay it because we improperly provided this money to them.
Okay, and it sounds like we'll have some, you know, several businesses that will qualify. And there aren't many that have been awarded yet, but we can, if you can just keep an update on how many eventually do become awarded, that would be, you know, helpful.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, my next question is for Mr. Bayshore. When we talk about a short time that northbound Shaner is going to be closed, can we have a translation as to what that really means?
The timeframe I heard from was anywhere around four weeks, but possibly less. So, I would, I can talk to the project engineer and-
We're done.
Get back to you on that.
And could you explain more to the residents than to me? Is the coordination that it takes between the city roads, the county roads, and state roads that will be worked on this year? And they always ask, don't we ever talk to one another to coordinate this, so not all the roads going in the same direction or worked on at the same time? So-
Yes, we do. We have an annual coordination meeting, the county, state, and city attend. We try to forecast our road projects in the future, you know, for the future. And I guess probably an example of that would be the Metro Parkway project that I presented, that will start at Van Dyke and going east towards Dodge Park. That was originally slated for next spring, summer, but knowing that mound road will be down near Metro Parkway at that time, and we'll have to reduce lanes on Metro Parkway, that we didn't want to have a double closure. So, we advanced that project to this year to try to alleviate some congestion for next year. So, small things like that. But, yeah, we try to coordinate the projects the best we can to alleviate the congestion, the best we can of all the agencies.
And then, when we were talking about the condition of the roads, and I'm really excited that's, that we now have more, a larger percentage of good roads than we had in the past. When we do this annually, do we go back and look at fair roads before they become poor roads to fix them, or do we, how often do we go back and rate the roads in the city? That's one question. And two, if we find a road, or if a resident complains that, say, there's a street that isn't on the list to be, you know, repaired, is there some kind of temporary fix that we could do to get them by during this season? That's my question.
Yeah, the first part of the question, we rate the roads annually. So, every year, we have 289 miles of local roads, and we rate, every fall, we rate them after we're done with our construction projects. So, we know the condition, they deteriorate at different rates. Sometimes fares move into, once they move, fares go into poor really fast. Sometimes it takes a while from a high fare to get into a low fare. So, it's important to, to rate them every year and take a look at them every year. And the second part of your question, yes, sometimes we find a road that, you know, we know is going, and it's going to be up for reconstruction. We have a few years left, so in that case, we coordinate with DPW, where they do an intermediate repair that can get us a few years till the time of reconstruction.
Okay, now on the sidewalks. When we talk about sidewalk gaps and the length that, you know, like we can say now that you can get, I believe it was on, maybe it was mound road, now I don't remember. But is it all on the same side of the street when we say it's a, it's a completion? Or does that mean that you have to cross over a street in order to finish, in order to get from, say, point A to point B, over two miles?
Yeah, sometimes we, for instance, let's take 18 Mile Road, we completed between Van Dyke and mound last year. That's only on one side of the road. So, at some point, you may have to cross over to- So at some point, you may have to cross over to complete your trip on that, on that road. But it may not be on both sides of the road, it depends on the case.
Okay, and we do, okay, the other thing, question I have is, I know that if you came to my neighborhood right now, in front of my house, I know there's a cracked slab. Also, another, another one that's raised. Now, the one that just needs to be adjusted where the slab is still good, but it's just risen. We don't make people dig up that all out and put a whole new slab in. Isn't there another adjustment that could be made to save that cement?
Yeah, they can, it's called mudjacking. They can mudjack it to try to even it out.
And that could be a.
Different opinions on, yeah, on that, how long that lasts and the type of repair it is. But that's an option for homeowners, yes.
And it's an option for homeowners to go and get their own repair? If we tell them that they need to do sidewalk repair, we, even though we have a good rate, if they choose, say they have somebody in the cement business, they could go out and have somebody, they can get their own contractor to fix the sidewalk as long as we like it after it's finished? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then if we fix it, is there a guarantee?
Yes, there is.
How many years?
There's a two-year warranty. Well, actually, we go, for the sidewalk on our program, we do a five-year warranty. And then if there's tree roots, we warranty that sidewalk for 10 years.
Okay. And I think that's it. Thank you very much. And I think that's everything so far.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Mr. Bayshaw, you might as well just stay up there. I just have a couple of questions.
Real quick, you'll get another chance in two weeks, Barb.
So when we're, your presentation was about sidewalk gap. The difference between sidewalk gap and sidewalk replacement is when a resident has a slab in front of their property that needs to be replaced for tree roots or whatever issue. Do we have the same loan program in place for those folks? Or is it just for the sidewalk gap?
No, we have the same special assessment for district for sidewalk replacement as well.
Okay. But that is based on income? Is that what you're saying?
No, they're all, you know, they're, they're all the same consent special assessments.
Okay.
So right now, what we offered was five years for the, for the replacement program. That's what we've offered historically at the current prime rate. So another thing that we did with the sidewalk replacement program is we waived interest for the first two years. So the homeowners have the option of joining the special assessment district and pay, and joining the payment plan essentially, or they can pay upfront.
Okay. So, so the 10-year loan at prime would apply to replacement as well as gap?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay. And the cap, the $5,000 cap stands for replacement as well as gap?
No, there was, let me, let me back up. The replacement program was a five-year, a five-year payment plan. And the gap was what we talked about moving to 10 years. So his, typically, the sidewalk replacement program creates lesser invoices or less financial burden on the property owner. The average cost was $833 on the last program we did per property. Whereas the sidewalk gap usually produces higher amounts to be invoiced.
Unless you're Mrs. Saroski or myself, we live on corners. So they, the replacement folks still have the opportunity for a low interest rate loan for five years to pay, because let's say I do have, you know, quite a few slabs that need replacing and it is quite substantial. I could apply for that program?
Yes, yes, you get the option to pay over five years.
But there's no cap on what my payment, on what my share could.
For the replacement program, no.
No, okay. And you did not mention this, but just out of curiosity, because I hate it. When are we getting rid of the Jersey Turn at 14? Any, any talk about that?
Well, that's a state jurisdiction, so we'd have to work with the state on that. You know, they did get rid of the one on 15-Mile Road that we know of when they did the reconstruction and we were in supportive of that, but we did not get down to the 14-Mile Road one.
Right, we got rid of 16 and 15, but not 14. Okay.
Correct.
But no talk? No talk about it?
No.
Okay.
It was done with the reconstruction project.
Okay, I think that's all I have for you. Then through the chair to Mrs. Varney about the pension, pension fund. Just to expound a little bit on what Mrs. Yarco had said about the voter-approved. That pension fund amount is not set by the city or by the city council. Who is that set by?
So every year, we have an actuarial firm. The pension board, the police and fire pension board actually is who contracts with the firm. We currently use a firm called Gabriel Roder. They calculate the value, basically the value of the pension fund. How much is it worth right now? How much do we owe? And, you know, when they look at what we owe, it's what do we owe to pay out the people for their lifetime? And there's all kinds of assumptions that are, how much are we going to make on our investments? How long are the people going to live? And as part of that, they come up with the liability that then you need to, similar to a mortgage, pay for over a certain number of years. And that number of years decreases every year. So, you know, I believe now we're at like 25 years. So you take, I mean, it's in simplistic terms. You take, how much do you owe? And you divide it by 25 and that's your payment. So that is determined by an actuary. It is, for the pension funds, it is a required contribution. And that is how we determine how much we give to the plan every year.
Okay, so when residents see that on their tax bill, just to be clear, that's not set by the city. It's not set by the council. It's set by the pension board and the actuaries. And the voters of Sterling Heights in 1988 approved giving them the authority to do that.
Yeah, that's correct. But, you know, the city does have, you know, some control over the growth of the liability. And we've done a lot over the last, you know, five, 10 years to reduce that liability. We've reduced the multiplier. We've reduced the, the portion of pay that can go into the final average compensation. So an actuary calculates the amount owed, but through, you know, through labor contracts and negotiations, we can have an impact on, you know, the amount of the liability and how much, you know, we owe on each person's pension.
Right, okay, thank you. Next, I, I'm not sure if Mr. Pohorsky or Mr. Vanderpoel can answer this question. And it's in regards to the part-time board and commission staff member that we're going to be hiring. In the past, boards and commission applications were always processed through the clerk's office. And I'm just wondering, is this position going to be in city administration or in the clerk's office? And why is that changing if it is?
That, Councilwoman Schmidt, that's a very good question. The, the, historically, boards and commissions have been administered from the city clerk's office. And, and we still expect that will be the case in a formal sense. But the project manager, Megan Ahern, will oversee the overall program and the position will report to her. But procedurally speaking, the applications will still be run through the clerk's office. So there's a little bit of a connection still to the city clerk's office.
Okay. And I can't stress enough how important it is to me that the members of especially the big three boards get that extra orientation. And it's not just for the new members, it's for the veterans as well because laws change, zoning ordinances change, things change. And, and sometimes we all just need a refresher. I know on council, we have workshops to refresh us of some, some of, you know, our things to. I, I can't stress, I'm very excited about that and glad that we are pursuing, you know, more education and orientation for them folks. I'm wondering if, you know, all the data input of the applications that we have now, and we're switching over to this new program, do we want to change the application before we switch over to the new program? Or are we, maybe Mrs. Ahern can answer that question? Would it just help save some time and manpower if we waited to change that application until the website was ready to go?
Yeah, so we actually, I've actually already started working on the revisions that we're going to make to the application itself. But that new application will not be available until we have the new software implemented.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And thank you for all of your work on this project. And I know it's been a huge undertaking. Next, and to the fire department, probably just a couple of comments. First of all, our, the fire department's proactive approach with the illegal marijuana grows and the hoarding situations, I can't thank them enough. I know between the fire marshal and the fire inspectors, they have been extremely busy, including all the COVID situations as well that they've been dealing with and having to look into, you know, violations and stuff. So I truly appreciate the proactive of the department in doing that. And as far as the fire cadet and explorer program, I'm really excited about because those are the kids that work in my, my program over at the career prep center, the EMT kids. And I think that this would be a great opportunity for some of those kids that want to pursue a career in firefighting or even as a paramedic to be exposed. They are able at this point in our program to test out, take the state EMT exam at the end of their, their school year. Unfortunately, that probably won't happen this year. But, you know, that just gives them a leg up into your program. And I, I'm really excited to see where that goes. And to open it up to more than just four is icing on the cake as far as I'm concerned. We're having a hard time recruiting firefighters, you know, first responders. And I think this is a way to get a hook into some of these kids that are, you know, maybe on the fence about is this, you know, what they want to do or not. And that's the beauty of the program they get in our building. And to be able to just expound on it a little further with, with the fire department, I think is just wonderful. And I'm really excited to see where that goes. And all the work with the vaccines and the COVID, I can't say enough, the fire department has really stepped up. Everyone's really stepped up. But from what I understand, the organization at both the senior center and the drive-through facility, it's seamless. And I appreciate all the hard work from the fire department. So just my comments.
Thank you. That's a credit to the staff that I have working for me. I couldn't do it without the, the great men and women of the department.
We told you, you were coming to a good department. And let's see. I think that's all I have for tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mrs. Kosky.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Just another comment. So my question was, will the social worker that we're hiring be involved in the Safe Homes Task Force? And that was answered, and I think that is awesome too because it's not just, you know, police situations that we may need them in. But that Safe Homes Task Force, I think is a great, great piece that they should be involved with as well. So I have nothing further now.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to compliment Megan Ahern. It sounds like you've got the boards and commissions under control. And it sounds like it's going to be a fantastic program when you get done with it. One question, is the person starting in August? Is that the plan or?
No, the, we're, we're hoping to have the person in place prior to August. August is the end of the timeline for when the software should all be implemented. But we want to have that person on board to kind of help us along the way to get that, you know, get used to the new program and to help us actually get the, the new software implemented. So that'll be done before that. We're looking in the next month to have that person hired in.
And did I understand you correctly? You're going to rewrite the applications?
Yeah, so we're not completely rewriting it, but we are revising it. You know, we, I have seen other models that other cities have done. And there's a lot that we can cut out and, and make it a lot more streamlined than what it currently looks.
So that they'll be able to select their one, two, three choices and not have to go through 20-some?
Yes, I think we landed on five, just to give them a little bit extra. Some of the, you know, with some of the boards, planning and ZBA, OBA, some of those are more popular. We don't want to just give them the three and stop there. So we'll give them about five choices. But as it currently stands, they can choose all 26. And it becomes cumbersome in the application process on the backend when we're having to input all this information into the database.
Will you also include their personal experience as to what they can bring to the table kind of thing?
Yes.
And what their preference, or I should say, what their interest is? If they don't have any background, what their interest is in something, correct?
Yes, so we're, we're hoping that we can add a feature for them to input their resume so that we can get a little background information. And we are going to put that question out there right on the application. It'll be fillable for them to tell us exactly what their interest is in whichever board they're applying for.
And did I understand you correctly when you said that you will have them solicit board and commission volunteers, members?
Yes, we are doing an overhaul on our recruiting effort. So stay tuned for that. We will have a lot more information going out on that.
You're doing a fantastic job. Thank you very much. In regard to the fire department, Chief Edmonds. I am very, very pleased to see or hear that you are going ahead with the fire cadet explorer program. And can we add EMT onto that? I have this strange feeling that you have a lot of experience in setting up a program like this. Would you like to enlighten me a little bit?
Well, the first thing that we would like to do with the fire explorers is kind of get our, our feet wet with bringing in students that are already in an EMT program at other schools and start with that. And then kind of grow what we're going to be doing in the future. So I'd really like to bring in those 12 to 20 students. We want to reach out for diversity. So we want to hit targeted areas of our community in the coming summer months and use our younger staff to do that, that, you know, represents a diversified workforce and have them be out there as our role models for this program.
And did I hear you correctly? You're going to go into the high schools, juniors and seniors?
Yeah, that's who we want to target is to, the explorer program will be going into the high school. And this will kind of be like a, a social club for them, probably the best way to put it, extracurricular activities after school. So as we bring them into the organization, what we're going to be doing is working with them on nights and weekends to have them experience the fire department, to know what it's like to put on an air pack, to know what it's like to do a turnout gear, what, what it's like to tie ropes and, you know, knots and ropes, and all the functions that we do, and also participate in that EMS function. You know, some of the students that are already enrolled in the EMT programs at the different high schools will benefit from that experience, working with our staff.
Just to maybe push that a little bit more. Are there any possibilities for any kind of scholarships that might come from our community foundation program? If you see a bright shining star, that would be a great Sterling Heights firefighter, EMT. Is there any way that we could maybe get that message into our foundation? Because they do like to give scholarships.
Absolutely. And part of that cadet program has some tuition reimbursement set aside. Absolutely, and part of that cadet program has some tuition reimbursement set aside that we're going to look at the members that are in the Fire Explorer Program, who wants to go further with their education because, just because they completed the fire, maybe fire training in high school, they might have become firefighter one. To work in the state of Michigan as a, as a career firefighter, you need firefighter one and two. Within our organization, you need paramedics. So they need to do that EMT program to be able to go to paramedic school. So we are looking at tuition reimbursement, scholarships, whatever we can do to help them be successful in attaining their career goals as a, being a firefighter.
A little more explanation on the marijuana grows. There is a task force put together that are concentrating on those. Do you need help there?
Well, again, that's, that's a big question, and, and only 30 days into the job, you know.
Okay.
We have to do a lot of, a little bit more research in that. But right now, like I said, you know, we've done 320 homes that have been abated since the program started last summer. We've got 160 that are in the queue right now. We are working collectively with the police department to take care of these issues.
So the answer to my question is, you will let us know in another six months or so? If you need assistance, or?
I will absolutely let you know.
Okay. The equipment that is being requested in the budget, can you explain the, the lift, is it, is that what it's called?
Yeah, the power load system that is part of, of the project that we're going to be undertaking. What that is, is a device that goes on the floor of the ambulance that the cot actually engages into. So the firefighters no longer have to lift the patient up to engage in the back of the ambulance. They'll connect it to this device, and then the cot latches onto it, and then they hit a button and the wheels go up, and then they're just able to push it in. The biggest risk that we have is loading and unloading patients. And that's referred to as cot drops, and that's a safety issue for, for things. We haven't had too many of them in our organization because our individuals are paying attention, but that is a possibility, and that helps alleviate that issue.
I was under the impression that these, I call them stretchers, that we have are all automated? And so this is something in additional to that?
Yes, absolutely correct. Our stretchers are what we call power stretchers, which have batteries and motors in them that hydraulically lift and lower those units. But they still have to be, when you put them in the ambulance, there's wheels and a hook mechanism that catches on the back of the floor of the ambulance, or that cot. And then the individual that's at the foot of the cot has to hold the weight of the patient while they push the button to retract the wheels to then put them in. What that power load system does is allow them to engage into that power load system. They no longer have to support the patient's weight while they're raising the wheels. That device does that for us. So like in the one slide, you actually saw the cot stick out, you know, from the back of the ambulance.
And will each ambulance have one of these?
Not in this current budget, we've only have two in the budget right now, going forward for this next fiscal budget.
And who will get those?
It's going to be the two highest units. I would like to have all five of them, but we're going to see where the funds are for that.
So our ambulances that have the most runs would be the two top ones?
Absolutely, that's where we would prioritize, because that would be the, where the possibility of the most injuries that would occur to our workforce would be.
And also, I'm going to echo my colleagues, you're doing a fantastic job over there at the Vaccination Center. Is, do you have any idea how long that's going to continue? Or is it strictly Sterling Heights residents? What the future plans there?
Well, the, the future plans for us is, we know that for the next eight weeks we'll be in operations. And then we're looking at the possibility within the next couple of weeks and upscaling to provide more vaccinations at that site. But that's all based on the vaccination supply that we're receiving right now. I actually have a meeting this Friday with some county members to see how we would be going forward with that. So originally, when that was set up, we anticipated a six-month, you know, window that we would be in operation. We're hoping to speed up the vaccine, so we shortened that six-month window. You know, some more people are vaccinated, so we can reach that target rate of 70, 80% of the population.
Now, are we still concentrating, as far as the senior center is concerned, on Sterling Heights residents there?
That's, that's been our primary mission, to try to concentrate on those as we go forward to do that.
Is there any information that we can give to our residents where they can call and make an appointment? I'm assuming it's still by appointment, correct?
Yes, it, it is still by appointment. We work real diligently not to waste any doses. So what we're encountering is, we have some no-shows that show up, and that's because people will put themselves on multiple lists. So we've got mechanisms in place to try to use all those doses that we receive every day. And there's many different formulas that we've put in place to do that. Working with the Parks and Rec, they, they've done a great job in assisting us with that. And then for the Sterling Heights, for any resident that wants to be vaccinated, you really have to go to the Macomb County Health Department website. And that's where you would schedule your appointment at either the senior center or the Lakeside site. If you have problems with that, there is a number that you can call with SMART to help you with that.
Very good, sounds like you've got everything under control. Thank you very much. Jason Castor, couple of questions. You talked about the Safe Home Task Force and a social worker. Is this the social worker that we plan on hiring? Or have we talked about doing any partnership with any other organization in regard to the Safe Home Task Force?
The idea would be to partner with entity that specializes as social workers, you know, available to help us with, with follow-up phone calls, assistance to these residents. Because a lot of time, the process is, is very slow in helping them clean up and realize that there is an issue, that, you know, they need help cleaning these up. So the idea would be that public-private partnership to help us, you know, communicate a lot of these issues to that resident to help them to clean up the issues inside the home.
Now, you also have been involved with the planning and zoning training?
I am familiar with it.
Okay, I was just going to say, it sounds like that's pretty well taken care of, the, the training and the iPads and the technical equipment that they would need. Sounds good, that's the only question I had for you, thank you. Brent Basha. We've been talking sidewalks for as long as I can remember. What about a sidewalk leading to the major parks? The five major parks? Have we ever completed that? All major roads have sidewalks leading to the major parks.
Well, I assume you're, like, for instance, Delia, you're probably inquiring about Dodge Park. I think the sidewalks are in place leading to the major parks. Are you talking about within the park itself?
Well, just.
The road to the park?
Yeah, from the neighborhoods, every neighborhood, you can go out to your main road and there's going to be sidewalk leading, leading to a major park. We've completed that?
Yeah, I mean, that's one thing we look at when we try to target, you know, gaps for completion. We like to tie together, you know, point of origination, which a lot of times is the subdivisions, and points of destination, which could be a commercial area or parks. And a lot of times, we are trying to make connections from the residential areas to the parks. For instance, on this, the sidewalk gap we did on Saul Road last year wasn't a lot, maybe 1,000 feet, but it was a key component where tied in the neighborhood, they can get on the Clinton River Road sidewalk and go down to Edison Court and get into the Dodge Park Trail system. So yes, that's one major thing we look at, is a point of destination in the parks is obviously a huge point of destination.
Well, that's been my major complaint, is on the south side of Clinton River from Hayes, all the way over to the Hanson Trail leading to Dodge Park. There's a couple of properties there that, there's a sidewalk gap. And we talked about, how do we take care of this? And I see that there's been some discussion on setting a cap. I have a question for you. Our lot size has been a 60-foot frontage, an 80-foot frontage, 100-foot frontage. That's usually what you see. Let's assume that you have 100-foot of frontage. What would it cost to put a sidewalk in front of that lot?
At 2019 pricing, that was about $3,500 for construction, or 100-foot lot.
Again, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, for, at the 2019 pricing that we bid last, it was about $3,500 for every 100 feet of sidewalk gap.
Okay, so normally, the largest lot that you would have in a subdivision is a 100-foot lot. So that means that I would say the cap should be no more than $3,500. That, that's where we should set the cap. And I think it would be a lot easier to then complete our little gaps here and there. Some people were fortunate enough to buy an acre of land or a half acre of land or whatever, but they didn't have sidewalks at that time. So if you're going to look at a cap, in my opinion, it should go with the normal average largest frontage in a subdivision, which would be 100-foot lot, my suggestion. I'd like the other plans, the reduced interest rate, spreading it out over a, a particular term. But I really, truly would like to see our sidewalk gaps taken care of so that we have that sidewalk from the subdivision all the way to the trails. This is what we're working for, is to give the people a walking trail, a bike trail. And I think we need to keep them on the sidewalk and not put them out on the road. That's my opinion. Other than that, glad to hear Sheena Road and Mound Road is coming up, getting it done. And that's it, doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. Kosky?
No, I think I'm done.
Mr. Edmonds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll try to be quick. Through the chair to Ms. Barney, there you are. You mentioned the revenue sharing was $580,000. Is that statutory, or is that all our revenue sharing?
It's both, so it's $580,000 more than the current year.
Oh, more than the current year.
So it's more than this year, but it was still lower than two years ago.
Oh, okay.
So, so again, so last year it went down. It didn't go down as much as we had feared at the beginning of COVID. But, so compared to last year, we're going to see about $580,000 more, but still lower than, 2, 100,000 lower than two years ago.
And was it two or three years ago, we got a lower amount from the state because of personal property tax reimbursement?
Oh, that's been four or five years, actually, yeah.
Okay, do we still get personal property tax?
We still get personal property tax reimbursement, again, but it's, it's capped at, you compare to your 2013 amount, so you, you're never, you don't ever capture your growth since 2013. And it, it's also, the, the millage rate is capped also. So we actually get it based on approximately 15 mills versus what we actually charge now. So yes, we get it, but we're not getting the growth on the personal property tax. And we also, for example, when we increase the millage for, say, recreating recreation, we don't really get that because we're capped at our total millage rate from 2013.
And, and the, the reason why we're getting the personal property tax is to help, we were using personal property tax to help pay for emergency services, right? Police, fire?
Right.
Those kind of things.
Yeah, so we.
So that's the reason why we're still getting some, correct?
Yeah, so we get, again, we get reimbursed based on our loss, you know, as of a certain time. And we still also get, again, every year, as you, I'm sure you know, the legislature allocated a certain amount of dollars that they have to distribute for personal property tax. So if the calculation for everyone in the state is less than that, then you get this extra personal property tax check, which we have gotten every year, and that usually comes in May. And we never, it's like a, it's a surprise, I guess, because we don't really know. You know, it's not guaranteed, it's dependent on what happens and everyone in the state. So we don't, no, actually, no finance director in the state budgets that because it's, it's very questionable. But we are still, like I said, we are still receiving personal property tax reimbursement. It's around $4, $4 million a year.
It's around $4 million, but yet we don't budget it?
No, we do, no, 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 we do budget the personal property tax reimbursement.
I got you.
That is in this, absolutely, we do.
Let's see, that's a lot of money not to budget. And do you know what percentage of revenue sharing, the statutory revenue sharing we're getting from the state? We're not getting 100%, obviously.
I don't know.
You don't know, okay. Maybe we can find that out at some point?
Yep.
I'd appreciate that. And since I'm talking to you, I am also happy to hear about the 86% collection rate on ambulances we, we had many years ago. We had been told that we'd be lucky to collect 70%, so that's a very good sign. Do you know what, how much we are collecting and what are, is it a profit, is it a loss? What's, what's our net, what are we gaining out of?
Yes, I, so right now, again, we, we collect around $3.5 million a year in revenue. When, including the six firefighters that we, that we hired, we're, we're basically breaking even. Like, for the current year, I'm forecasting a net return of about $300,000 to the good. But as, as you go out over the, the subsequent years, as firefighters pay increase and costs increase, over the 10-year period, we're, it's basically break even.
It's a break even up proposition.
And just a comment on the collection rate. One of the reasons we've heard from ACUMED that our collection rate is so high is because our firefighters do a very good job at filling out the required reports that, you know, then the insurance companies, again, the, the vast majority of this money comes from insurance companies. So, you know, insurance companies are going to pay as long as reports are filled out correctly and they agree that the, the trip was required. So I know ACUMED has indicated that's one of the reasons that they feel our collection rate is so high.
Great, sounds like great training. Whoever trained our firefighters to do that did a great job. And through the chair to, thank you very much. And through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, I'm curious, as far as the social worker goes. And by the way, I think this is, this is actually a great hire because I know, you know, in, through my experience, a lot of people fall through the gaps. There's a lot of programs that are offered by the federal government, state government, county government. And it seems like it's sometimes those, those programs are really hard to, for individuals to attain. for individuals to attain. So I think this is really going to help our citizens. But I'm curious, who is the social worker going to be reporting to or working under?
Thank you, Councilman Yen. That's a really good question. Right now, we have the social worker centralized in the police department. I am reporting to the, it would likely be a lieutenant. That remains to be seen, but certainly situated in the police department. However, I will say that there will be a lot of interaction with many different city disciplines. Code enforcement on the Safe Homes Task Force, certainly the fire department, the police department, Parks and Recreation Department. There are so many different disciplines that deal with challenging situations in the community on almost a weekly basis. So the position will definitely be highly collaborative, but centered in the police department.
And will that, that individual's pay be through the police budget?
We have a dedicated revenue source. The city council has approved funding for the position. So yes, it would be technically budgeted in the police department, but not, the funding wouldn't come from, you know, wouldn't, it wouldn't displace funding that already exists in the police department, which I think is your question.
Well, okay, no, it's fine. So who is going to determine, are they going to, are they basic, we don't have anybody that, with that expertise here. Are they basically going to write their own duties and responsibilities with, with the overview of what we're looking for? We don't have any policies and procedures set up for social workers, whatever. Are they going to be responsible for basically building the book from scratch?
Well, we certainly have a job description, you know, that'll have to be refined and modified as time goes on, but it is a new position, so it will evolve.
Okay.
Based on the needs of the community. But again, we know exactly what we're dealing with now with the Safe Homes Task Force. We know what we're dealing with, like, for example, there's, you know, we've had a wide variety of solicitation going on on the side of our roadways. And a lot of times, that's problematic. There's not a, our police officers are not equipped to necessarily deal with that. A social worker, however, will, will be able to work on those situations and get those individuals connected with some of the resources that they need. So you can see the sampling of different assignments that a social worker would be charged with, from potentially a hoarding situation to situations in the police department where it doesn't rise to a criminal level, but we're making repeated calls to an individual home for mental illness situations, to homelessness, which we do have some of that in Sterling Heights, of course, roadside solicitation, and the list goes on and on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Castor. This has absolutely nothing to do with budget, but since you're here, why not? I get, I shouldn't say a lot, but it, I do get the occasional comment about someone walking, you know, their dogs, and they have to dodge the branches, and sometimes this is city property. So I know while your team is out and about reviewing properties, who reviews our city properties? Are each department individually responsible for those properties? Like, is Parks and Rec responsible, or DPW? Or do you find what would be, if it was a private property, be a violation and notify them? How does that work?
Yeah, so if we were to be notified of a city sidewalk path that has an overhanging, low-hanging branch that is a concern, based on the department, maybe it'd be Parks and Rec, DPW that would have the equipment manpower to go out there and trim up, you know, the branch over the walkway. Yeah, I mean, in terms of a private property, it would result in a violation and, you know, the property owner taking care of that. But in our instance, if it's brought to our attention, it would be, you know, a department, you know, probably Parks and Rec or DPW that would go out to service that area. And like for the Dodge Park Trail system, you know, it's traveled routinely by staff, so if they do see something, they could obviously take care of that when they see it.
So the question is, do we actually go out and look for these problem areas, or just wait for someone to use the C Click Fix?
Yeah, I mean, so it wouldn't be under city development necessarily, but-
Okay.
I wouldn't want to speak for Parks and Rec or DPW if they do that, but I would.
Okay. Mayor, if you don't mind, I could interject.
Yeah, sure, please.
Councilman Yen is on that point. Just by way of example, the DPW department, for example, inspects all retention ponds and all fencing. For example, we're going through a refencing program as we speak. So anytime there's dilapidated fencing along a retention pond, they're going in and replacing that fence. So that's sort of a routinized process. Likewise, the Parks and Recreation Department has a process where they go by, go through our park system, our trailway system. If there's any sections of it eroding or falling apart, they get that scheduled, they get it incorporated into the capital plan, and so on. There's many examples of that. As you also know, we have our tree trimming program in the right-of-way, which also abuts city property as well. So I would say in most cases, we have formalized programs, but there are situations where we simply don't get to all of them. For example, you just forwarded us one a couple of weeks ago that a constituent expressed concern about, and in that case, the fence was overgrown in a sort of a nondescript area, and definitely that needed some maintenance. Now, in that case, that was not on our plan. So in most cases, we have programs, but there are some cases that we appreciate relying on residents to or others pointing it to our attention.
Okay. So occasionally, something does get away from us, but they tend to be kind of in a corner somewhere, things where there's not a lot of traffic. I get that. It's just that it's important to make sure that we are checking every nook and cranny in the city, because somebody lives in that neighborhood somewhere, and, you know, and fair is fair, right? If we're, if we're ticketing somebody for not keeping up their property, we certainly need to keep up our property, so. But I do appreciate the work that Mr. Castor's team does in helping keep our city up and looking really nice. Oh, boy. All right, Chief, it's your turn in the barrel. Two months on the job, welcome. And by the way, great, great work over at Lakeside, and Captain Walker, and the entire team deserves kudos for the work that they're doing across the street at the senior center as well. They're very efficient and very well-run. I'm going to start with the power lifts, or the, yeah, the power lifts, no, the power loads. The power loads.
Power loads for the instances.
Yes. Yes. I think it's rather cute that you still refer to them as cots. They haven't been cots in a while, but how much, so the power, the power lift stretcher is a battery-operated stretcher, is that correct?
Correct.
And how much does that thing weigh?
It is, best guess, probably like 55 to 60 pounds, with all the added weight that's been done with the hydraulics and everything with it.
And then, so say, let's just say 55 pounds, and you throw a 200-pound individual on there, now they're, they're sort of leveraging 255 pounds, the current system that we have, without the power load. And there's also a maneuver where they have to sort of kind of pick up the front end? Is that right?
It all depends on the terrain that they're in.
Okay.
And what the angle of kind of departure is between what the stretcher is and what the back of the ambulance is. Most of the times, when you load nowadays ambulances, there's a little bit of lift on the very front of it to get onto the deck of the back of the ambulance.
Yeah.
And then the, one of the paramedics has to hold the weight of the entire cot and the patient while they hit the button and the wheels retract, and then they're able to push the patient in.
So you put the big guy on the back end to hold the weight? Yeah, I get it, I get it.
But usually it's, in my experience, has been the smaller.
Yeah. I fortunately never had that experience. Thank you very much. But, so, you know, I appreciate that we're trying to be frugal here. The idea that, and I don't want to put you on the spot, since you've only been here for two years and you're an at-will employee. Your boss is sitting over here.
Two years, month.
But, two months?
Two months.
Two months. Did I say two years? Two months. It seems like two years. But-
Yeah, we treat them like they've been a month and a half.
I appreciate that you want to put, if you only get two, you're going to put them at the two busiest ambulances. But the fact of the matter is, you only have to lift the one guy one time to throw your back out, correct? I mean, you can throw your back out just getting off the rig, correct?
It is correct. You can, you can have an injury.
You can have an injury, and you're lifting, so you're holding this thing up in the air. And it's not like you're holding it knee level. You're holding it up here, right?
Usually.
Yeah. You're holding it about chest-high. We have some firefighters that are maybe a little shorter in stature that are holding it up even higher, correct? So just because you're not on a busy ambulance doesn't mean you can't throw your back out, placing a stretcher into the back of an ambulance, correct?
That's right. You may have somebody else that also responds with the ambulance that is doing that lifting because the paramedics are doing more high-level skills on that particular.
Okay. Have we had any, again, I know you've only been here for two months, have we had any back injuries lately, or?
We've had back injuries, as far as the total specifics, I couldn't give you that because I didn't do a deep dive into that.
Okay.
You know, in, in the last, you know, 35 days that I've been here.
Okay. But these are, these are, these power loaders are a safety device. Would you say that?
Yeah, they aid the personnel in reducing injuries. Most EMS agencies that have put them in place have saw a reduction in workers' comp claims.
And if we, workers' comp claims, and if somebody's injured and they're off, and heaven forbid, they have to have surgery, then we have to fill their slots with overtime, possibly-
It can be costly, depending on the type of injury that an individual suffered.
I got you. Thank you very much. And let's talk a little bit about, if you don't mind, the marijuana grow operations. We've been calling them marijuana grower operations, but the reality is, the majority of them are residential marijuana grow operations. Would that be correct?
That is correct. They're mostly illegal residential grow operations.
And you said that we've abated about 340 of them, you got about another 160 in the queue. Do you have, do we have any idea how many are left out there?
We know that there's more, but I couldn't give you a set figure because it's something that we're chasing.
And have we had, and I know we've had fires. We've had, I think, at least a couple, three, right? Fires from-
We've had three fires that have been strictly related to the marijuana grows.
This year?
Yes, within the last 12 months.
Within the last, okay, within the last 12 months.
And then we've had 50 electrical incidents or fires, or DTE equipment that has been related to the grow operations.
You say five zero?
Yeah, 50, correct.
Okay, so like pole fires, transformer fires?
That is correct.
Those kind of fires. Has anyone been injured or died in one of these fires?
I would have to do some research to get back to you on that question.
And are there, is there a potential for a hazmat situation? Do they have like chemicals in these homes that they're?
Illegal grow operations can be hazardous to our personnel.
So this is also a safe, safety issue. What, 110 full-time personnel, what is the extinguishment versus inspection?
Our inspection bureau right now is staffed with six, and one of those individuals is the fire marshal, so we have five inspectors, and then we have the fire marshal.
Okay. And were we able to do all our city inspections last year?
No, we were not.
How far did we fall short?
Quite a bit. I couldn't give you a specific number.
Quite a bit sounds good, if you're looking for that number. Quite a bit. I'll go with quite a bit. And with one guy basically dedicated to these marijuana, residential marijuana grow facilities that we don't know how many are left, correct?
Right. Since we began this cooperative program with the police department, we've had 1,200 hours invested in an individual dealing with these grow operations since June, June, July of last year.
Can you put that in dollars and cents? $1,200-ish?
It is the equivalent of a full-time person, as far as that goes, so I'd have to look at the specifics as far as what we're paying the inspectors right now.
It's a lot, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money.
And I can get back to you on that cost after talking with the finance department.
And that'd be, that'd be great. And you stay right there, but I think Mr. Vanderpool might be better at answering this question. So my understanding is that when someone modifies a home to grow marijuana, it takes a lot of power, and quite often, they steal, they're certainly drawing far more than a house should, correct? Hence the fires.
Absolutely true, because they have additional lighting equipment that's in there, processing equipment, and cooling devices.
Heating and cooling devices. And so quite often, they're stealing the electricity, sometimes.
That, that has occurred.
That has occurred. And my understanding is they now, for cooling, are stealing water. Is that correct?
That has happened in three of those cases to date.
Okay. So through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, who's, who's on the hook for the stolen water?
Councilman Yen has very good questions. First, I want to thank the mayor and city council, because you all have given us the authority to go into Circuit Court on a lot of these cases under a blanket resolution. In the past, without your blanket resolution, we would have to come to city council individually on every single one of these, and you could imagine how cumbersome it is. So we go directly into Circuit Court, thanks to our city attorney and his legal team that are, they're very involved with these cases. So if we come across a case that can be substantiated, that they're stealing electricity and/or water, we work with DTE and of course, our water department, and we pursue the appropriate criminal charges in those cases. So it's a very holistic, collaborative, very intensive program that I would say is a model in the state, and we've taken a lot of these directly to Circuit Court for quick action to shut them down.
Okay. So I still don't know who's paying for the water.
Well, again, if we, we-
Are we paying for the, the stolen, I mean, Great Lakes Water Authority is-
If the water is stolen, yes, we have to pay for it initially, but we pursue criminal charges to recoup our costs, yeah.
So then the next cost is, how much is this costing us in legal fees? Or, yeah, how much?
Well, we can provide you another comprehensive update on our costs to date, but-
That'd be great.
But we have provided some updates, and yes, suffice it to say, there's a lot of costs involved to shut down 300 illegal grow operations. It is an inherent problem, again, across the region, but there is a cost to us for being very proactive, but it's critically important for our community.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. So just to wrap up, because I know the time is getting late, there's more out there, we don't know how many are out there, where they're stealing electricity and water, they're very dangerous, they've caused fires, and we are way behind in our inspections, correct? Does that sum it up? Chief?
Yes.
Very good. I know there's something else, but I can't think of it after, I had my Perry Mason moment, thank you very much. I apologize, Mr. Kushevsky, for pretending like I'm an attorney. I hope you're smiling underneath that mask.
I am.
And the mayor, too. I apologize to the mayor as well.
Oh, you prosecuted a good case there.
I, I, I guess-
People who see those hiring, I hear.
Uh, mm. I, I, thank you very much, Chief. I really do appreciate your, your time up here, and I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask real quick, because I don't have a lot. Does anybody have any brief follow-up? I know, Mr. Radke, you said, just very briefly.
So briefly, through the chair to Mr. Kushevsky, I talked with the, the police chief earlier today about marijuana grows. I assume he's going to be speaking to us about it in our next budget meeting. But talking to the police chief and now hearing from the fire chief, is there something we can do to strengthen our ordinance to really root out these marijuana grows in our neighborhoods, including, I talked to the police chief this morning, and I'm wondering, why aren't we seizing their houses? If they're, you know, a blight on the community and they are drawing power, like Councilman Yen has says, and stealing water, and detrimental to the, to the life and safety of our communities, because some of these houses- because some of these houses blow up, things, bad things happen, I, I think that the excuse from some, and I know that we have some frequent flyers, from your data that you've given us, we have at least five or six that I know of that have five, six, seven marijuana houses that we've abated, so at a certain point, I think we have to start holding property owners responsible for basically leasing these illegal, because what they're doing right now is they're going to court, as I understand it, and saying, "Well, I just leased it, I didn't know what they were doing there." And I think that's kind of a poor excuse for being a bad neighbor, so I'm wondering, what can we do to beef up our ordinance to really root these out so it's not just a constant shifting of the problem in the community?
Thank you, Councilman Radke. I guess I want to step back a little bit to talk about the program a little bit more because while circuit court action is involved in the more serious ones, we have taken a unique approach to attacking this problem that other communities are starting to model because it's been so successful. The biggest one is working with DTE and identifying the high electrical usage. DTE's been good at assisting us in shutting off the power in these homes. As you, you probably guessed, you shut off the power to the home, the issue goes away because they can't use the power, they can't grow the plants, the plants get shipped out, and they come into compliance very quickly. The other thing we did is through the fire marshal and the fire code, is we've been able to modify that code so we have limited the amperage to a home to 200 amp panels as opposed to the 320 commercials that we were seeing. So by doing that, we've limited the ability to have the electrical power going into the home to run these lights, and, and they don't use LED lights because they don't affect the, the grow as well as the old halogens do. And the fan systems and the cooling systems and all of that are higher energy output. So without those panels and without additional air conditioners, which is also limited tonnage based on square footage unless you can show a need, and there's an appeal process for that, except other than that, we've taken away pretty much the ability to have these optimum grows that have these huge grows because we don't want to infringe on individuals' rights to grow under the Recreational Marijuana Act, which is not called that, but I use it for simplicity term, because everybody in the state over 21 can grow 12 plants in their home. We can't stop that. What we can stop is the mega-grows that are happening and the ones that are growing 40, 50, 60 plants.
Commercial use, basically, for recreational...
And they're, and they're essentially turning the house into a, into what I would call a greenhouse. That, of course, destroys the home. So this program, these, these over 300 homes that we've shut down, we've only had to file 50 lawsuits, and of those 50 lawsuits, almost all of them have been resolved before we actually stepped foot into court. Because the, we get into them, we tell them, here's our ordinance, here's what you have to do to be in compliance, and they either shut down because they can't and won't come into compliance, or they come into compliance and we have the right for inspections built into the order anytime we want. So we have really curtailed this as we're finding them, and each home that we shut down is having a dramatic impact on the residents of Sterling Heights because we're shutting them down. Now, the interesting thing to note is that other communities have tried moratoriums, other communities have tried doing it a different way than we're doing it, and they're not finding success. Other communities are having just as much trouble, even those that have commercial grows that are legalized. This black market marijuana grow operations are not impacted, they continue to grow, the state allows for these home grows to happen because of the recreational act, and they haven't limited anything under the old MMA law from 2008. So it's very difficult for us to enact ordinances that take away rights under the 2008 law because it's preempted. So all we can do is, under the recent case law, is deal with these secondary effects. And that's what we've been doing under this program, which has become a model that Shelby Township is looking at, Macomb Township's looking at, Warren's looking at, all of them have contacted us to talk about how we're doing it and how we're doing it so well. So I, I think the program is working, as you can see by the number of homes shut down. Our old method of catch as you can, we're being more proactive now, and I think this is having a major impact.
Maybe that's why we had such a back order, because we started to catch them ahead of time and put them off. So I guess I have two follow-up questions, very brief. For the frequent flyers, marijuana is legal. I, I don't care if you smoke, it doesn't matter to me, I don't think our, our police care if you smoke it or you do whatever, but if you are clearly operating a black-market marijuana business, can we pursue charges? And if we can, is the county prosecutor up to the task? Because it seems to me right now, there's been no charges filed for these frequent flyers, five or seven guys, who keep on violating both our ordinance and state law. They're trafficking essentially, and I'm not, I guess, I don't care about marijuana, but I care about these several individuals who seem to be a bulk of our problem, I guess, here in Sterling Heights.
Under the old prosecutor, the prior prosecutor before Mr. Lucido, we were told that they were not going to take any of these marijuana cases, so we have to prosecute them locally, so there's only so much we can do with respect to that. Mr. Lucido is currently looking at the program and what they're going to do in the future. We're hopeful in our meetings with the prosecutor's office that they will start giving us some parameters so that we can understand what we can bring to them from a county perspective, by giving Mr. Lucido the time to figure that out. Because it is a, as Kevin would say, it's a, it's a very, very big issue, and it's a county-wide issue, it's a statewide issue, and it's not getting fixed.
Like fireworks, this is a problem, the state has foisted upon the local with no money and no guidance, and we just have to make our own way. It's very frustrating. What is the maximum penalty we can currently assess? Sorry to ask so many questions, Mike, but... What is the max, what is the maximum penalty we can currently assess as a municipality against someone that is constantly violating our ordinance?
I'd have to go back and check, but I think it's $750, but...
Can we, then, is that prescribed by law, can we raise that?
We could raise that, that's, I, I'd have to look.
Well, without objection, I'd hope you'd come back and give us some tools to hopefully go after, not just the, the one-shot person, but these people who are constant thorting our sides to really hopefully make them cost a little bit, help us recoup some of our costs, because obviously, if we have to, one fire inspector devoted to it, it's costing us a great deal for a very, I mean, the peace of our neighborhoods is important, but also getting our cost back is, is important. I always have one more brief question to, to community development, or actually to Mr. Vanderpool, I'm sorry. Are we going to be hearing from the planning commission, or is, who asked our questions to community development today through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool?
Councilman Radke, if you have a specific question about that commission tonight, it'd be a good time to ask it. Jason Castor is the director, the city planner is the direct liaison.
Yeah.
Through the, through the chair to Mr. Castor, I was hoping, I, through the chair to Mr. Sorry, I went a little fast there. I was hoping, I know that we had it proposed, but it wasn't budgeted, a total look at all of our zoning laws and our, you know, we have to do another master plan soon, but a new zoning plan, and I was wondering, one, if we do go out for that, could we hopefully hire the same consultant we used for the North Van Dyke project? And two, when we might get that off the ground? Because I watched the ZBA meetings and the, the planning commission meetings, and it seems like our, the additions we've made to the master plan and to the zoning plan, all of those ideas don't quite relate together with how we do things now. For example, we have a zoning for parking that only affects one parcel in the entire city. So I was hoping we could have an update on when we might be able to get that underway so that we don't have as many cases before the ZBA and the planning, because we've actually brought the master plan and the zoning plan into, so that they match each other instead of be opposite.
Yeah, so the, you know, in terms of hiring the company to come in and look and review the master plan, processes select the current North Van Dyke, went through an RFP process, but going through that same process again, having worked with them in the past, you can look to modify the current agreement to add on additional work, and also go back to, you know, that, that same well and, you know, use their great resources, as they have been, you know, very great to work with for that North Van Dyke quarter project, you know, and bringing that, you know, to, you know, to the issues that you mentioned, bring that to them, being that they can incorporate those into zoning changes and master plan upgrades.
To expand on that, I really do think we need a top-to-bottom review of our, our zoning plan, especially as it relates to parking minimums, and some of the other setback requirements and things that are a little old-fashioned when it comes to how we're doing things currently. I'd like us to look at ADUs, because if Birmingham can do them, I understand why Sterling Heights can't, and I, I think we need just a top-to-bottom review, because for example, I watched the, it had to be the zoning, the zoning board of appeals last month, and they had someone who wanted to do microblading come in, and I guess that's, that's some kind of dermal thing for your eyebrows to add ink. And our ordinance says that a tattoo parlor, which a microblading place, I guess qualifies as, can only open after 11:00 a.m. And her salon would have to change their hours to only open after 11:00 a.m. to offer this to residents. And that seems to be an old-time regulation that doesn't have much basis in how people live their lives today, especially when I read in The Atlantic that one in four Americans has a tattoo now. So I don't understand why, for example, a tattoo place can't open after 11:00, is it something about 11:00 a.m. that's the magic hour for tattoos? That's written into our zoning ordinance, it needs to change, it doesn't make sense. So I think a top-to-bottom review would kind of work out some of these things that maybe in the past, that would, that made sense, but would, would, doesn't make sense anymore, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, just any brief, Mr. Yanis?
Can I, I apologize, but I, I just have a couple more, and unfortunately, they're for the fire chief again. That's so unfortunate. Very quick. Again, I know you've only been here a short time, have you had a chance to review the manpower study for the fire department?
Briefly, yes, I have.
Yeah, do, do you recall if it said anything specifically about how many fire inspectors we should have, city this size?
No, the manpower study looked at mostly the operations for the fire and EMS portion of the department. That's something that we definitely could look at through the accreditation process.
Very good. And do, do we have any retirements coming, I know we have retirements coming up this year, how many retirements do we have coming up?
We're going to be probably looking at two retirements, possibly a third one, and then we have to replace, I think, two firefighters, so a total of four replacements this year.
That'll all be under, out of extinguishment, nobody leaving inspection?
I'm not aware of anybody in the investigation, or inspection division.
And then the one last thing about the power loads, I know the documents that Chief Miller gave us, there was a quote in there for not only the power loads but also maintenance contract, my understanding is, we don't necessarily have to buy the maintenance contract?
That is correct, the, the maintenance contract's kind of like an extended warranty to push it out seven years. Normally, you have a one-year warranty with any device, and then that, that contract pushed it out another seven years, or total seven years.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chief, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem, Mr. Yanis. Ms. Arco?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just a quick question to anybody that wants to answer, are safe or grants renewable? I know that we're, we're using one in the fire department for the six new hires, but is that renewable after the three years?
They're not renewable as far as I know, but we did receive a second one, which was a second application process, and I do believe that that was quite unusual to get a second one.
Nothing further.
Anyone else? Well, I want to just thank, as I always do, thank all of the directors and managers and employees who helped put together tonight's budget presentation, a lot of very good, valuable information. We have a lot of homework to do here on the city council, and I appreciate all the questions that were asked by my colleagues. I don't have anything to add to it tonight, I thought that the presentations were very thorough, and so, Mr. Vanderpool, Ms. Varney, thank you for the information, and thank you to everyone who presented here tonight. We will be having again a second one two weeks from tonight, so that would be, what, April 27th? We will, of course, have a regular city council meeting at the, at the very next Tuesday, a week from today. So I do believe, however, that we have to vote. Did we vote? I don't even remember. We have to vote.
Go to adopt the first step.
You have to vote to introduce.
It's been so long.
That motion you're talking about.
So I was about to just move right on, and so I think we need to vote. So the motion on the floor is to introduce the fiscal year 2021, '22 appropriations ordinance, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to the next item on tonight's agenda, which is communications from citizens. We have one participant tonight. One once, twice? Okay, thank you. So close that portion, and anything more, Mr. Vanderpool, for tonight?
Thankfully, Mayor, nothing more from me.
Okay, very good. Mr. Kushevsky, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Council, any unfinished business reports, anything new?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yanis?
I would, I would like to thank the Parks and Recs Director for not scheduling a dance class at a regular city council meeting.
Yeah, I was like looking as, I didn't think it was supposed to storm tonight. Probably couldn't hear that at home. Anyone else, anything for tonight? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and supported, no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.